I called to order the regular session of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpin Springs on Tuesday, November 8th, 2022 at 6:30 PM. Roll call, please.
Mayor Vaticiotis?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Here.
Commissioner Carr?
Here.
Commissioner Eisner?
Here.
Commissioner Kulias?
Here.
This evening's invocation was going to be given by Reverend Christina Griss. However, she was running short and had to vote, and she left me with her invocation that I want to read this evening. And if we can all stand, and I'll read the invocation, and in turn, we'll do the pledge of allegiance, and then get on with the agenda. Holy God, today I want to pray for the men and women who serve this community. Bless them with your protection from harm, your wisdom for making decisions, and your strength to carry them out. Bless them with courage when too many obstacles come their way. Bless them with peace to navigate their journey of service through highs and lows. I pray for your presence and your spirit tonight for this meeting, for the discussions and the decisions. In your loving name, we pray, amen.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for being here this evening. I've got a couple of announcements. One is items 19 and 20 have been deferred. One is related to an application for Keystone Village Residential Preliminary Plan Development. And the second one has to do with the Land Development Code, SMART Code and Comprehensive Plan text amendments. Those two would have been heard earlier, except that there were some errors with the newspaper advertising, not on the part of the city, that we had to defer these to a meeting on December 6th. Also, as soon as this meeting adjourns, we have another second meeting, the Community Raging Agency for the Downtown Tarpin Springs Redevelopment Area. That will be immediately following the regular session. So let's get on with public comments. Is there anyone here for public comments?
Thank you, Mayor. David Ballard Geddis Jr. I live at 802 Georgia Avenue in Palm Harbor. A few years ago, the Pinellas County Commission and the Palm Harbor Town Council met at the Palm Harbor High School to propose developing a roundabout on Alternate 19 in Palm Harbor. The residents overwhelmingly rejected the roundabout proposal. Only a few of the people in attendance of the meeting were in favor of the roundabout. Upwards of 90% of the people in attendance of the meeting expressly rejected the concept of a roundabout. A few weeks after our town hall meeting, Ms. Rebecca Vincent, who was working for the county at the time, stood before the county commission and stated that a majority of the public interest was in favor of the roundabout. Her statements regarding the sentiments of the residents rang untrue to my perspective. I balked at Ms. Rebecca Vincent and continued to balk at her untruthful representation as a servant of the people. She is in misrepresentation of the residents. The residents did not support the roundabout proposal. I asked Ms. Rebecca Vincent exactly what portion of the public does she promote by making her comments to the county commission? More important importantly, what portion of the public is being discluded by her comments to the county commissioners? Are the residents being excluded in making decisions as to how our money is being appropriated? Florida Statute 373.019, Section 15, defines artificial corporations as being that of a personhood status. I ask Ms. Rebecca Vincent, is she serving the interest of that which is artificial in a corporate personification as defined in Florida statute, using our money inappropriately to support that which is artificial in such roundabout development? I believe the nature of that roundabout development does not support the interests of the residents as much as it does a artificial corporate undertaking. And Ms. Rebecca Vincent, in my opinion, has abused her position. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Geddis. Public comments? Anyone for public comment?
Good evening. Peter Delakis, 514 Ashland Avenue. It's interesting that today, driving around town, I happened to pass one of the polling places and saw a lot of cars and people waiting in line, and that was good. And what it also reminded me is that even though there were a lot of people there, a lot of people don't participate. But being that Veterans Day is coming on Friday, and just want to remind people that not only is it a privilege, but a duty to participate because so many of our fathers and grandfathers, uncles, aunts have perished in order for us to be able to stand here and speak to you freely and to vote for you or others. So I hope with the passing of this day and the few weeks to come that we will have peace. And in that, I would like to read a couple passages. First is Isaiah 40, 28 to 31. Do you not know, have you not heard, the Lord is the everlasting God, the creator of the ends of the earth. He will not grow tired or weary, and his understanding no one can fathom. He gives strength to the weary and increases the power of the weak. Even youths grow tired and weary, and young men stumble and fall. But those who hope in the Lord will renew their strength. They will soar on wings like eagles. They will run and not grow weary. They will walk and not be faint. That is us at this time. We must not grow weary. And the last one is Galatians 6, 7 to 10. Do not be deceived. God cannot be mocked. A man reaps what he sows. The one who sows to please his sinful nature, from that nature will reap destruction. The one who sows to please the spirit, from the spirit will reap eternal life. Let us not become weary in doing good, for at the proper time we will reap a harvest if we do not give up. Therefore, as we have opportunity, let us do good to all people, especially to those who belong to the family of believers. And so, as this day passes, may we have hope and peace for our future, today, tomorrow, and going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delakis. Anyone else for public comments? Mr. Jump, do we have any remote access comments?
Public comment, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do have a raised hand, and we'll allow the first person in.
Hello?
Yes, if you could state your name and address for the record.
Chris Roboski, 1602 Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpin Springs, 346 State 9. So I wanted to make you aware that Mr. Clay Colson's case proceeds. You should be aware of it by now. Filed something on Friday. So this thing's going to the Supreme Court as Clay continues to fight to defend the 74 acres on the Anclown River, currently owned by Walmart, that will one day be made a park. He also defends our First Amendment right to collect and gather news. And oddly enough, the newspaper printed a story about our former legal counsel for the city, Trask, has filed a lawsuit against a resident of Tarpin Springs. I assume it's a resident of Tarpin Springs, posting something on Facebook, trying to chill the free speech of those who would speak truth to power, to people that are public persona. Whether you speak at the podium in Tarpin Springs City Hall or over Zoom like I'm speaking now, or you speak on Facebook or any other modality like it, we have that right. And every single one of us will gather behind that person and take that case to the Supreme Court. I'm just glad that the Trask firm is no longer squandering citizen money on these foolish things. And now is having to come out of pocket, I assume, to pay for their own case that will go on forever. Wherever you are, we got your back. And Trask, just knock it off, man. Just come on, man. Why? Let's let all this stuff go. Doesn't have to be like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jump, is there another comment?
We do not have any other raised hands at this time.
Thank you. Ms. Jacobs, I know we have one email to be read into the record.
Yes. The email is from Deborah Thompson to the City Commission of Tarpin Springs. I wanted to address the street project on Gross Avenue that has been going on for over a year. Our street has been a disaster for over a year, and we are looking for answers. I have written to the project manager with my concerns and have not received a response. Our cars were damaged during the early stages of the construction, and I addressed this with the project manager, and he never responded. My valance was ripped off the front of my car when I backed out of my driveway and ran into a deep hole in the road. We both backed into things sticking out of the road and put holes in our rear bumpers. I sent pictures and questioned how to file a claim, and I have not received a response. We want to be compensated for the conditions that we must endure during the ongoing non-construction. We have a huge never-ending dust problem in our house, and we always seem to have a sinus problem and cough a lot. The cars drive extremely fast down our road and slide on the gravel to come to a stop at the stop sign. We have asked to have the road closure signs put back into place, and no one cares. The signs were taken away for Hurricane Ian, and no one cares to put them back. We just need answers. How much longer must we endure the gravel road, the health issues, and the speeding cars? We pay our taxes and are law-abiding citizens. We feel like we live in a third world country. No one seems to care. If it was our house in your neighborhood, if it was your house in your neighborhood, wouldn't you be embarrassed to have company over? Please just give us answers sincerely. Deborah Thompson.
Thank you. Mr. Lacorius, could you say a few words? I know you and Mr. Robertson talked about that before the meeting.
Yes, this is the first we've heard about this from this individual. This is the first we've heard about. I don't know who she talked to. It was the contractor, but we'll be getting on it first thing this morning to get it all. We haven't seen a claim. We haven't seen any of these things that she says in there. So we don't know where she went to, but it's on first thing in the morning to get with her and find out all this information and do what we can for her.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Can we close that street to traffic and just keep it for local people?
We can look at that, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. But that ends public comments. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. There's six items. One, attorney's fees, Trask, Agnol, LLP, November Front, one invoice. And then number two, special events. And there's five of those. Snow Place, Boat Parade, St. Nicholas Vespers, Christmas Parade, Holiday Movie in the Park. Number three is approved name change of Cardinal Incorporated Engineer of Record to, well, it doesn't say. But in any case, there's a name change there, and the new name is actually in the backup. Item number four is increased file number 220161-C-AS Computer-Aided Dispatch Automated Report Management System. Item five, increased file number 23004-N-AS Single Source Purchase of Rugged Machine to Machine Gateway Integrated Broadband Global Positioning System Routers. Item six, award file number 230048-C-AS Parrot or Poro ANFAI USA Government Drones Utilizing General Services Administration Contract GS-07F-0387Y. Does any commissioner wish to pull any of these? I'd actually like to, well, let's go ahead and approve those, and then I've got a request from, for Chief Young through the city manager. So let's have a motion to approve items. Well, let me go to public comment first. Are there any public comments on any of these items? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to speak on these items, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to approve items 1 through 6, please?
Motion to approve consent agenda items 1 through 6.
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kulias?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotis.
Yes. City Manager Lacorius, could I ask Chief Young to say a few words about the manatee protection?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Chief Young? For the Christmas parade, every year, we work with, very closely with FWC, Florida Wildlife Commission. They go in prior to the boat event, and they do monitor the manatees in the bayou area for us, and then stay in there throughout the boat parade through the night to make sure that everybody's going through there to the idle speed zone.
And there's a sweep of the bayou prior to the?
That's correct. With the FWC, they come in with the boat into that area. That kind of gives the manatees a little heads up, something's happening over here, and they start, you know, doing their little migration out of the area and stuff to safer waters. But I've talked to many of the people that work at FWC about this over the years. They say idle speed zones, the manatees will get out of the way. They'll go through there. The biggest risk to manatees is when boaters are speeding through idle speed zones and not maintaining a safe speed, and that puts them at the greatest risk.
And I do know that the commission authorized an update of the manatee protection ordinance as well.
That's correct. And in our local ordinance, which was approved by the state, it gives this board the availability on two dates, Christmas parade being one and the other being Epiphany.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to the special consent agenda item. Number seven is renew file number 190130-P-JL Health Benefits Brokerage Consultant Services. City Manager Lacorius.
Yes, I'll have Jane Niffen come up and give us a presentation.
Honorable Mayor, Board of Commissioners, good evening. Jane Niffen, HR Director. I'm here tonight to request that you authorize the extension of the contract with the Garing Group Inc. for Employee Benefits Brokerage and Consulting Services. It's RFP number 190130-P-JL. The period of the renewal would be from December 3rd, 22, through December 2nd, 2023, in an amount not to exceed $125,800. A while ago, back in 2019, the city elected to contract the services of a benefit consultant, and that was to secure the most complete employee benefit coverages at a reasonable cost. And what they do is we would consider a combination of service, level of benefits, and premium cost. We had an evaluation committee comprised of people from across the city departments, and we evaluated a number of proposals and unanimously recommended the Garing Group because of the service that they provide. They have, in the past three years, they have actually initiated and made recommendations on an RFP for our, excuse me, our medical dental, I'm good, excuse me, medical dental life, LTD, and voluntary benefits. In fact, they've also recently done an RFP for our risk management services. So basically, what they've done for us is kept us legally compliant, which is very important, and with all these laws and changes coming down. They have acted as a liaison to the insurance companies, and they have run interference, there you go again, excuse me, run interference and trouble, and do troubleshooting for us with the insurance companies to help the employees through maybe appeals or denials of claims. Basically, in a nutshell, I'll outline some of the services. They have a minimum of eight people that are constantly in contact with the city. They provide workshops, seminars, training. A lot of this has been done online in the last three years because of COVID, but now there's onsite visits, and there will be conferences and other workshops. We have, there isn't a week goes by that we don't have contact with the Garing Group. They provide the online enrollment, which we just went through, through Bentec, their online enrollment and administration tool. They also are very responsive to all of our needs. And basically, the bottom line is, they have saved us a lot of money. In fact, in health coverage and dental, in 2021, we saved over $100,000. We've been able to hold the line the next two years, and I'm sure will be discussed later in the wellness portion. You'll probably remember the end of September, right before the hurricane, we renewed the risk management contract. Again, Garing saved us over $181,000 in premium. So bottom line is, they have the expertise, and they also have the leverage that individual cities do not have with companies. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Niffen. Let's go to public comments. Are there any public comments on this item? You didn't have anything else to add. You didn't have anything else to add, did you?
No, except again, when this thing was first done in 19, I was a little skeptical. And this thing is some of the best money we've spent, and it's saved us probably the next two or three years of savings for what they've saved us. This is one of the best moves we made, and they've paid for themselves many times over, so.
Okay. Public comments? Anyone, public comments? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments on this item?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time, sir.
Thank you. Let's go to commission comments. Vice Mayor Lunt?
No real comments, except they've been doing a fantastic job, from my understanding, and I look forward to them doing a fantastic job going forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Carr?
Yeah. I would just say, the kind of proof is in the pudding, is what, and Jane gave a lot of good evidence in this. This is a great hire, a great hire from a consultant standpoint for the city, for its residents, and for the employees. So I think it's a good idea to continue this relationship. So I think it's a good idea to continue this relationship. It's the additional benefits that come along with it, not just negotiating the health insurance and the dental insurance, but the other ancillary items come along with it too, which are great aspects to it. So Jane, thank you for coordinating all this and pushing us through initially a few years back and then bringing it to the board. Thank you.
Commissioner Eisner?
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, Jane. I'm impressed with it all. I just had one quick question. Most of the time when we get these bids, we get to see the bid. Why was there not in this particular one? It seems that there were four evaluated responses. Why that wasn't presented?
Basically, it's a renewal, an extension of the contract. I'm not sure. I would have to ask Ms. Lewis as to whether that's a normal practice.
I'm not questioning your decision making by any means. I'd just like to see the comparison to what, you know, the other bids came in at?
You're correct. This RFP was done and evaluated and I forgot to include it in the backup information. Normally, when we do a renewal, we like to give all the documents. Every now and then, I don't catch that and this one did not. But I'd be more than happy to send them to you so you can review.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Thank you, Ms. Niffen. The presentation was good. We got to see when enrollment happened this year, how they were constantly having the workshops and the ability to set up staff to come out here and sign up or get questions asked. And so I think it's a great benefit to the city and I know it's paid off. So thank you, ma'am.
I don't have any comments. I just want to say the world's gotten complicated and it's hard for the staff to keep up with all of these things. And whenever we can get help and they pay for themselves, it's worth the money. Thank you, Ms. Niffen. Roll call, please. May I have a motion in a second to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticius?
Yes. Item eight, authorize execution of First Amendment to Wellness Center lease agreement. City manager, of course.
Ms. Niffen, introduce our guest.
Yes. First of all, I'd like to make the recommendation and I'll introduce Mr. Sean Fleming, who is the, a senior benefits consultant with the Garing Group. We're recommending that the mayor and Board of Commissioners approve the attached First Amendment to the Wellness Center Agreement and also the amended agreement itself. This extension is for a three-year period, effective October 1, 2022, through September 30, 2025. And it is contingent upon the city's purchase of health insurance through FMIT for the period October 1, 23, to September 30, 2025. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce Mr. Sean Fleming.
Thank you, Jane. Good evening, mayor, commission. So it's been a couple of years, but our contract for the lease for the health center is up. And being that it only comes up every couple of years, we thought it'd be good to just go through a couple of highlights on it, just to refresh everybody. And any questions y'all have, please stop me and answer. So just a little bit of quick background. FMIT, which is Florida League of Cities, ultimately included the health center in the medical plan starting for the 2016 and 17 plan year. That health center is operated by CARE-ATC, which is a third-party provider that operates clinic services throughout the state and throughout the country. And with that, real high level of services are, you know, primary care, urgent care. We have lab pharmaceutical services. There's no cost for the employee for any of the services that are rendered. And just to take one step back and really look at clinics and the concept and why this was started and why a lot of groups have adopted this, is looking at the cost of care in the current medical system, as well as challenges with doctor shortages, the cost of medications, people not going and then potentially, you know, finding out too late that they've got a condition that they could have got ahead of. That's kind of the whole concept of the health center is if we can do those things and we can get ahead, we can offer care to employees at removing that cost barrier, we can ultimately reduce the costs of the medical plan. So that real high level, those are our goals for the clinic. So the League of Cities put that included in the health plan because they knew if we shift those services out of the health plan to a lower price point in the health center, we would ultimately be able to control costs, control claims expenses, offer better renewals for the employees down the road. So the city's sort of buy-in for that was, one, to have their insurance through the League of Cities. And then the city picks up 79% of the lease for the actual facility. CARE-ATC uses some of the back area for administration for some of the other clinics in the state. So they pick up that 21%. And then the city enters into that, an agreement with FMIT and then also with CARE-ATC for the lease. So how is that working? As you all know, we did the medical renewal a couple of months ago. So there's a lot of benchmarks we look at. I don't want to put you to sleep with too many metrics tonight, but really, the tale of the tape is how much are our employees having, spending in claims, prescriptions, office visits, hospital? And what does that look like on a year-to-year basis? So if we go back to 2017, that average was $952 per employee per month. If you look at that graph, you'll notice a little bit of dip in 19, 20. That was our COVID year where we had a lot of shutdowns. But if you look overall, going back five years, we've had about a 3.3% increase. National medical inflation during that time period has been closer to 7%. And in Florida, we're typically 3% to 4% higher because we have an older population, we have more demand on doctors, they're able to charge more for some of those things. So overall, 3.3%, and that's not even per year, that's in total, in five years, is really outpacing the market. So overall, the results of the clinic in helping to control those costs have been fantastic. If we showed you this graph for a lot of other entities in the area, you would see 6, 7, 8, 9% increase in those costs. And think about, starting at almost $1,000 per month, that compounding gets pretty, pretty high, pretty quick. So overall, the results that the clinic has helped generate has been fantastic. So going to the actual renewal, the renewal for the clinic, as Jane said, is contingent upon you having your health insurance through the Florida League of Cities. So what happens if next year, we do a bid? Next year, the Florida League of Cities provides a rate that we think is absorbent based on the claims? What are our options? So back in 2020, when we last negotiated the lease, we did negotiate an exit clause of 120 days. So if the city decides that they don't want to renew with the League of Cities, they just have to give 120 days notice, which was within the timeframe that we have the renewal and have renewal decisions. That's to help the staff find other jobs and ultimately wind down the clinic. So the big question or the big concern is, you know, does this put the city in a point where you're backed into the corner a little bit because of this lease and having to buy your insurance from the Florida League of Cities? So I want to just answer that part. So ultimately, if the city chose to leave early, and let's say you left with two years to go, you would have basically a payment of $40,000 per year for those two years. To put that in perspective of what the medical plan costs, it's about 1.6% of the spend on the medical. So the question comes, if somebody offered you a health insurance plan without a clinic and the same benefits for only 1.6% less, would we recommend you leave? Probably not, because it's going to cost you more than that just to change everybody over, have new doctors, all those things. Somebody comes in 15% lower, as an example, offering you the same benefits and as good of a plan, well, there's a potentially hit of 1.6%, but we're still saving 13.5%. So in that case, we think it would make sense. All the other provisions are the same. So with that, we ultimately recommend that the city choose to renew that lease option. And as I said, if in future years, if the health renewal is not where we want it to be, if somebody offers a significantly better deal, we know that there's that minor cost to terminate if need be. And with that, happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Thank you. City manager, of course, do you have any, anything to add?
No, sir.
Okay. Let's go to public comments. We're going to do public comments first and then we'll have the commission ask any questions. Public comments? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
Anyone online would like to speak on these items, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Let's go to the commission. Vice Mayor Lunt?
I just have one question. It's on your chart, and I'm not quite sure of the page number. I think page five. It states here that you're looking at the per-employee cost for medical and pharmacy claims? I'm actually kind of shocked that they're that high. Are they, are you looking overall or is this just for the city of Tarpon Springs?
This is just for the city of Tarpon Springs.
So you're saying on an average, every one of our employees uses almost $1,000 a month in medical claims?
On average, yes. So if you look at medical plan data though, and we look, to kind of give you an idea about that, typically, you're going to see 50% to 60% of a group have less than $1,000 a year in spend. What you'll also see is 3% to 5% of that group is probably generating 60% to 70% of your claims. So typically, in any given year, we have two or three individuals on a plan that will have anywhere between a quarter million dollars and a half a million in claims. So it doesn't take very long to skew that number with a couple of those catastrophic claims. And I would say one other thing, if I, I don't have hard data in front of me, but just a lot of groups in the area, our average claims per employee per month, all we do is, is government entities, is in that $1,200 to $1,400 a month range. You guys are actually about 20% below that.
Okay. Thank you. So this is more of a, an average rather than a median?
Correct. It's an average based on those last five plans.
All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Carr?
Thanks, mayor. So did CARE-ATC already renew their lease for this space? And then they're asking the amendment to be completed as well, too? Am I understanding that correctly?
As far as the current renewal or as far as?
Yeah. It says the medical facility, it talks about CARE-ATC entered into a lease agreement to lease the property through 2025. Now, is that part of the discussion that the Garing Group had with CARE-ATC to go ahead and lease it through 2025? Or how did that work?
So as far as where other facilities looked at, is that kind of?
Right.
Where you're going? No. So CARE-ATC ultimately maintained those discussions on whether or not, you know, to move the facility. And there were some of these where they were locking in. The big thing that you look at that, when we look at office space, is there's also the concern of equipment costs and some of investment in that. So some of those would generate some extra expenses in that regard.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, in the past, it was, for the board's edification, this was shared with the city of Olsmar. It's in Palm Harbor. It's, I guess, middle Palm Harbor. It's not like it's south Palm Harbor. So I don't know. I would hope that, I've seen it more towards Tarpon Springs. I don't know where the majority of our employees live though, so that could have been a study that could have been completed as well, too. Now, did they just lock it in for three years just because of what was offered to them? Or is that just kind of standing, they want to, you have any more information on that?
They were, the League of Cities was doing based on three-year renewals in that regard. I think if, you know, the city wanted to look at alternate locations, that's definitely something we could do for the future. We just need to start that process a little ahead of subsequent renewals.
Yeah. It was brought up a few times in the past.
Maybe not necessarily the three-year. We can take a look at their negotiation on that lease if there's an option.
Okay. I think it'd be wise to look at, I mean, where the majority of the employees live and come up with a strategic spot where it goes instead of just saying CARE-ATC or ATC, whatever it's called, you guys figure out where you want to be and we'll show up, right? So it was brought up before in the past and I think it's something that was missed this time, but hopefully it won't be missed next time. Thanks.
Commissioner Eisner?
Thank you. Thank you, mayor. So help me understand, this does kind of compete with our own insurance, no?
So yes, it does compete with your insurance in the sense of where do I choose to go? But ultimately, that's a benefit to your insurance because the price point in the health center is quite a bit below retail. So they're not trying to make a profit. They don't have some of these margins to hit. They're able to spend a little more time with the employee. So we ultimately see a lower cost, typically 30% to 40% with a regular type visit with the health center. So what we're trying to do is direct that out so that we see relatively lower increases on our medical, because obviously, that's a pretty large piece of budget there.
So when we go to negotiate with the, our health insurance, do we then bring up the fact that we have this for negotiation skill, for negotiation?
So ultimately, the League of Cities, who is your health insurance, it's United Healthcare is the network, but the League of Cities, the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust, is the health insurer. So they're the one on there. So they have both pieces of the puzzle.
I understand. Thank you.
So that's, so that's part of what we look at when negotiating the renewal.
So then I presume that they would use that as a bargaining chip, that there is a inexpensive way to get your medical? And if it should be more complex, then we would go with United, you know, healthcare?
Correct. So what we do every year going into the renewal, our office independently, is we look at the claims experience, we look at the utilization of the health center. And we actually do an actuarial projection based on where we think, based on your utilization and expenses for both of those, the renewal should ultimately be priced at to cover those costs. Then if the insurer comes in with a rate that's above that, that's part of where we use that data to negotiate with them, say, okay, we understand you want a, making up a number, a 10% increase, but based on the data that we have from both the health center and the utilization on the medical plan, which is what drove that graph, we're able to tell them that, you know, as an example, expenses were $5 million, which is why, you know, you can charge a teeny bit for administration, but we're not going to pay much over $5 million for the plan. Instead of them coming and saying, well, we want to charge you $7 million next year, but we know that everything in the program is only costing them $5. And that's part of the process that we play with them in negotiating that.
Do they have separate pharmaceutical prices between healthcare and this? And does anybody do that cost comparison to see which way to go?
Yep. So we, so the League of Cities and CARE-ATC each year, and then we analyze the report, they compare every pharmaceutical being offered in the health center to the cost of the pharmaceutical on the medical plan, make sure that we're only stocking meds that are a lower price point, even though the employees don't have a co-pay. So we use that price after the employee's cost share to make sure that it's lower than the health plan. Otherwise, we don't offer it, other than, there's a few exceptions every now and then with what I call some loss leaders, typically your antibiotics. There might not be that much savings, but there's really no cost, so it's worth us stocking those because it saves the employee a visit to the doctor where there would be a much higher cost. So there's some drugs that are maybe 10 cents more than on the medical plan, but it makes sense because it saves us money in the long run.
So are you saying that there is no co-pay on any of the pharmaceuticals in this?
In the health center, all of the pharmaceuticals and all of the services are offered at no co-pay to incentivize the employee to use that.
And that doesn't matter whether it's code A, B, C, D, as they, you know, usually, they monitor, you know, they put labels on all the different drugs?
Correct. So in the health center, though, we only have generic medications. So if somebody needs a brand name, they still need to go to their retail chain.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate the answers. It was not only enlightening to me, but anybody that's listening as well. So thank you. I appreciate that.
Yes, sir. You're welcome.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Thank you for the presentation. And after speaking with some city staff, they do appreciate the Wellness Center and being a member of the Health Center.
And after speaking with some city staff, they, they do appreciate the wellness center and being able, be able to go there and take advantage of everything you guys have to offer, so it's appreciated. Thank you.
The only thing, I, I think for information, you're our healthcare consultant as well. And so it's important to understand that this is part of the overall approach to saving costs for our healthcare and, and obviously you're there pitching for this, so you recommend it to continue on as we have been.
Yes, sir. Based on everything where the, the pricing and the benefit that they've offered you, we absolutely think it's worthwhile. And, but I'll just caveat that if we ever don't think it is, we're gonna tell you that as well.
Right. Thank you very much. May I have a motion in a second to approve, please? Motion to approve? Please.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticius.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
Mr. Pullos. Our next item is, um, review and approve internal audit of Human Resources Department. We've got fifteen minutes to go before we go to our ordinances.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll be real quick this evening. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, good evening, thank you for having me this evening. Yeah, the reason it's gonna be real quick because half of the, the findings, I'm really not gonna go over because they've already been remedied, so I just put them in, just following audit protocol, I, I included them in the audit. And those have to deal with, uh, the employment contracts. You'll remember, I think, I wanna say back in late July, the board voted to, uh, to reapprove, both the police chief and fire chief's contracts. And, um, based on what the city manager's told me, uh, in his response to this audit, the new, when he, they hire a new city attorney, he's gonna have him review, review the, uh, the employment contracts and maybe get a standardized, standardized contract. So I won't even, won't even talk about those. So that leaves, uh, well, let me, let me just back up and I'll just, uh, start from the top. The audit was the HR department audit and I looked at, uh, three different areas. That's personnel file, personnel files, uh, pay additives, employment contracts, employment contracts, not gonna talk about this evening unless someone's got a question on it, obviously. I tested personnel files, cause there's, there's a lot of federal regulations and, uh, and state statutes concerning, uh, personnel files, a lot of requirements, a lot of required documents. So I, I, I tested, uh, what they call the regular employee files, not the medical ones. Tested onboarding files, offboarding files, and I found no exceptions in any of them. The HR department's file room and the HR suite was, was, was secure and, and properly monitored. It is an older system that they use. It's a, it's a paper-based system. They don't really have a, an HRAS or Human Resource Information System, but, um, that's not their fault. But regardless, they, they, they do, they do a pretty good job, they're, they're very well organized. So I didn't find any issues with that. Then I looked at pay additives and I looked at, uh, two pay additives. I looked at the shoe allowance and lead worker pay, lead worker pay one and two. The shoe allowance, I found no issues with them, in fact, they had really strong controls. It may not seem like a lot, shoe allowance, it sounds a little, it sounds a little funny, but, but, uh, there's over a hundred people and I'm not including the first responders, and over a hundred people that benefit from that. And we spend over twenty thousand dollars a year in, in shoe allowance, so it's, uh, it's, it's, it's definitely relevant. But there was strong controls with that because the, the shoe allowance, there's a committee that decides who gets it and they tie the shoe allowance to the position, not the person. And that's the proper way to, the proper way, proper way to do it. So, um, excuse me. That leaves, uh, the lead worker pay, that, that's where I've, I've found some issues. And, uh, the, the findings are really more examples of, of, of the, the more symptoms, I guess you could say, or examples of the problem. And the problem is the policy itself, the lead worker pay policy. The lead worker pay policy, like I say in the report, it's, it's overly broad as to who is entitled to get lead worker pay or who, who can possibly get lead worker pay. And it's, uh, it's not specific on, uh, I'm sorry, it's overly broad on, on, on what constitutes lead worker pay and it's not very specific on who can get it. Basically, in a nutshell, almost every employee barring the charter officials can get lead worker pay. And that's not what a lead worker pay policy is. And, uh, you know, I, I won't go through them unless anyone's got any questions, but you can see where you, you have directors that are getting it and executive employees shouldn't be getting lead worker pay poli, shouldn't be getting lead worker pay because by definition, they are lead workers. So, um, it would actually disincentivize a director as well to, to get to, uh, to fill a position when if they know they can get lead worker pay and just do a little extra work. Also, I found some instances where, you know, where there was half of one department getting it and that doesn't make a lot of sense. The question is who are you, who are, who are you, who, who's doing the leading if half the people are getting lead worker pay? But at any rate though, so it's basically just, it's, it's, it's just a bad policy. So if you have a bad policy, you're gonna have bad results. I've talked to the city manager and they're gonna, they're gonna review the policy and, and tighten it up. But that was, that was pretty much it. I mean, that, there's, like I said, there's, 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 uh, like five examples of, of where the lead worker pay policy failed. And there was, uh, I think seven of, uh, observe, what I call observations, which are, uh, positive things in, in the audit. I could go through those, but I doubt you all want me to. But, uh, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer it. But the good thing is, in a nutshell, identified a few deficiencies, basically in the lead worker policy. City manager has, is, is going to address those. Same thing with the, uh, the employment contracts. So I don't see any, any, any issues going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Pullos. Let's go to public comments. Are there any public comments on this item? Any public comments? Mr. Jumper, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to commission comments. Vice Mayor Lunt.
I'm actually surprised at the director level. We'll get lead worker pay, but outside of that, really, as, as always, I appreciate, um, the diligence put into your work. At this time, I'm satisfied with the management's response. And, uh, thank you.
Thank you. And I'm satisfied as well. I thought it was, uh, it was, it was, it was clear and concise and, uh, I appreciate the city manager and, and the HR director's response as well.
Okay. Commissioner Carr, thank you. Vice Mayor Lunt.
Yeah. I'm just happy you're working with the city manager to rectify, um, some of these areas. So, and some of the areas that need to be updated, so I appreciate it. And I think it's good to be, being able to bring some of it to light and update it and move forward.
Absolutely, thank you.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just had a couple of questions. These, all these issues, these findings have been corrected or will be corrected?
In the process of being corrected, yes, sir.
Okay. When these, um, the contracts that went astray, shouldn't that have been done by the past city attorney? And shouldn't a new city attorney be the person that, that takes that on?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, maybe I wasn't clear. That's, that's what, uh, that's what the, the city manager said in his response. He's going to have the, the new city attorney, uh, review the, the, the process as to who should have a contract, which employees and what those contracts should have. My goal would be to have a standardized employment contract with, you know, interchangeable benefits and, and those things, but they all should look the same, you know, save for the, the benefits and a few other small things. Cause right now, we basically have two contracts. We have, uh, my contract's very similar to the city manager's and then we have three other employees who have contracts and they're, they're totally different. I mean, they're just, it's, if you've seen them, then you, you'd see what I was talking about there. To me, I think that they're, they're, yeah, technically legally sufficient, but not something you would expect from a, from a licensed attorney that, to write that.
So you're saying that that should have been, that in your opinion, that was, should have been done by the city attorney?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Okay. I'm glad to see that when we go forward with the new city attorney, that'll be done. I, I just tended to see that the, um, this lead funds was like an undeclared bonus. And, uh, I'm just glad that that will get rectified. And, you know, I look forward to having these things corrected and hopefully the city moves forward with it, so that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kuyas.
Thank you, Mr. Pullos, for the presentation. Seems that everybody's been able to get the answers, uh, to your questions that you're in need of. Everybody's were able to work together. And, uh, you know, just the overall lead worker pay with some of the recommendations from the auditor, uh, I think at some point, we need to discuss a merit-based system. You know, I've spoken to some city staff and some department heads that think that could be a course for us to take. And, uh, you know, at some point, I think we need to have that discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think there's gonna be some policy issues that come out of this, uh, as, as you're describing. Mr. Pullos, I want to commend you on this audit. I think it's excellent. It read much, in my opinion, very well. It was objective. And, uh, quite frankly, I think everything was handled, um, very nicely. I said, you know, the city manager didn't knock on my door once, so evidently that's a good sign. And, um, and I spoke to him and, and things will be worked out and I'm very confident that they will. As I've said, we haven't had an internal auditor for many, many years and there's no doubt that with every audit that you're gonna do, you're gonna find something that needs to be corrected. That's your job. And it's just getting, getting it done. I'm sure Ms. Jackson's gonna be helping us with some of these things in the future. That's gonna be her role with the items, the deficiencies that, um, you mentioned. The city manager's already talked about that. So I'm, I'm looking forward to, um, I'm, I'm congratulate both you and the city manager on this audit and getting it done and, and moving ahead with these corrections and also looking forward to all your future work for us as well. So, thank you. City Manager Lacorcy, I, I'm gonna reserve your comments till last, if you have anything to say.
No, I don't have anything to say.
Okay. May I have a motion to, uh, accept the, uh, audit report and its findings in a second, please?
So moved.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticius.
Yes. Okay. It is seven twenty-five. And we have agenda item. I'm trying to think. I think what we should do is, uh, let's, let's adjourn for five minutes and, um, we'll pick it up with the ordinances and the resolutions at seven thirty exactly. So if you need to take a break, let's please do that now. Adjourned or going to recess at seven twenty-five.
Not editorialized on that, anyway. Ms. Vincent, would you like your report made part of the record?
Yes, the report and the, everything that was included in the agenda back up.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kokolakis, do you have a cross-examination, Ms. Vincent, of anything that she said?
No.
Okay, would you like to, do you have a comments or anything that you would like to state? If you could just state your name and address, it sounds like Mr. Kulyas, Commissioner Kulyas, excuse me, would have some questions for you.
Good evening, everyone. Joe Kokolakis, Dunedin, Florida. Buena Vista Drive. I guess, in a nutshell, I would provide more of an update than a statement. The building, you know, I have had my office across the street from the building for over thirty years. And it has been in ISO for over thirty years. I've grown attached to it, as many of us have grown attached to it over the course of its hundred and almost twenty year history. And it was built originally as a stable with a boarding house above it. About a hundred and ten years ago or so, it was converted to a hotel. I know Renee said this is an adaptive reuse application, but it's not. It's a restoration. It's a restoration of a critical piece of Tarpon Springs fabric, and that's it. It's always been a hotel. I understand, you know, well, not really understand, the procedural comments, and I'm not here to even speak to that, as far as how the process works. But this is just something that we've looked at, and I've wanted to restore over the course of many years. Towards that end, I've worked, you know, since we last met, almost two parallel approaches. Number one, we hired a consultant, performed a vision study, bringing in, you know, the, 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 the design team, and, 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 you know, I hate to say it, my family members that are involved in this process. Because it is kind of a strenuous, expensive undertaking. Whereas, you know, just some of the comments that came out of the Vision Center is, "The Livery Stable is a unique hotel destination in the heart of Tarpon Springs that will provide an atmosphere of sophisticated authenticity to the guest experience, anchoring the economic evolution of Tarpon Springs." Another comment, "To create an educational showpiece of resiliency and sustainability that inspires our community, and to create better places and spaces, to build a contemporary economic catalyst that is fiscally sound and operationally sustainable." So, we've hired consultants to review the feasibility of an eight-room boutique hotel in Tarpon Springs. We also have, you know, retained engineers. We've done borings. There was a sinkhole next door. We've done boring tests all around the property to ensure that the subsurface conditions are suitable. We conducted X-rays of the entire building, all the block walls and the foundations, and found out, unfortunately, that there's not one piece of rebar in any of the walls, not one filled cell, no rebar in the foundations. So, we're going to independently build the structure on the inside, and the existing walls are going to essentially be just, just a screen of the building. Because it can't withhold anything as far as structural load. So, we're doing all this to preserve a building that is important to everyone. I can't get bank financing, because it's in a sinkhole area. I can't, you know, there, there's, this is one of the rare opportunities in this community that I've been a part of for thirty-two years to accomplish something important. This is much more, you know, granted, it's eight rooms. You know, you could, you can, you can make business decisions because of the limited size and scope of the project. It's small enough that you can take care of it without bank financing. But it's something that I believe in, it's just as important at Tarpon Springs as anything else that's come before this commission. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Kokolakis.
Any questions?
Let me ask the commission, any questions, Vice Mayor Lunt?
No, I, I want to let you know that I'm sympathetic to what you're trying to do. Most of my angst here is against the procedures that the city follows.
Right, I understand. Commissioner Carr?
I've got no questions. Thanks.
Commissioner Eisner, Commissioner Kulyas?
Thank you, Mr. Kokolakis. I know it's been several meetings between the first reading. We had discussed parking on the backside of the building. Can you elaborate on, you'd be able to fit some space for eight rooms of parking in nearby streets?
Well, A, whatever, we haven't submitted anything yet to staff. We have two site plans. They both, I think, have between eleven or twelve parking spaces. They would, right now, we are leaning towards no access off Orange, and access only in the alley. That's one of the plans, but we haven't decided yet. Whatever we submit, obviously, would, you know, be vetted and approved.
Okay, and the, the one building north of the, the stable, have you thought about what you wanted to do with it?
Oh, that's actually, I mean, that single-family home, I mean, right now, our plan is to have the caretaker for the hotel live there. You know, their parking lots will be connected, probably. It is one piece owned by one LLC, The Livery Stable. So, at this point, they're, they're intimately related.
Absolutely. Thank you. I have no further questions.
Okay, Mr. Kokolakis, for the record, when you mentioned site plan, you're talking about the parking layout, is that correct? Okay, the buildings and the single-family home next door to it is obviously going to remain there, so that's not affected?
Well, the parking lot on the one plan connects both. Both, the parking for both the single-family and for the hotel will both be a combined lot behind them on the east side.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Vincent, do you have any questions for Mr. Kokolakis?
I do not.
Okay. Ma'am, would you like to come forward and, and you will be able to ask questions? That's what you're coming up there for.
Mayor, can I just interject one thing? Please note that, for these, we're talking about the land use and the zoning right now. This conditional use application's coming next, so I just, some of this may be more pertinent to the conditional use, but...
I, I, I know, Ms. Vincent, thank you, and just please be patient with us all. So, thank you. Ma'am, please come forward and state your observations, make your presentation, and then we'll go from there.
Nancy Subic, 334 East Orange Street, Tarpon Springs. I have a couple of questions. Did you say there was going to be eight rooms altogether in your hotel? I just think that the residential downtown area, which has been residential, we just keep going further and further back with all this development and commercial stuff. There isn't going to be any historic homes left that are historic homes. I understand that he's trying, you're trying to bring that back to the original, and why don't you put stables down below and, and have your lofting up top if you're going back to what the original is? And I don't think that there, what, what do you consider a boutique hotel? I mean, are you having a gift shop? Are you having a restaurant? What's going to happen next door? Just the landlord is going to live there? And did you say that you live in Dunedin? This is Tarpon Springs. This is not Dunedin. You own the place across the street, owned or built. I just, I don't want a bunch of desirables. I don't think that the parking area is going to be enough to cover the people that he's wanting to cover. And it's just, it, it's, do we need a hotel? You know, I mean, really, I just, I don't want to look at it. I don't want the traffic. I don't want the noise. I don't want, at least if it's an Airbnb, you check out who is going to come and be there. You just don't take in whoever's there. So, I, I don't want a hotel there. I lived there for twenty years, and little by little, the commercials are just encroaching on it. Pretty soon, we'll be commercial up to here. So, that's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Kokolakis, would you like to provide any rebuttal?
Just to be clear, there, there's no retail component or anything that would require additional parking above the eight rooms and the single-family home next door to it.
Okay, thank you. And as Mrs. Vincent pointed out, for the process, purpose of the process, I want to clarify that what we're talking about right now is the future land use amendment and also the zoning. There's going to be an item sixteen, which covers the same property, but it's for conditional use. We'll go through this process again. So, with that, let me go to public comments. Are there any public comments on this item? Please come forward. You have to come forward, state your name.
I'm not within five hundred feet. I'm probably within eight hundred feet. My name's Mark Wood. I live at four twelve East Tarpon. And to Nancy's point, I love seeing the historical aspect of Tarpon maintained. As far as what you were describing, I've heard rumors of the, of the hotel, or the boutique, however you want to call it. Do I understand that it's going to stay two stories? You're not really changing the structure. You just, you're maintaining the integrity of the structure, so that it's safe, is that right? And then the, and I understand the owner of the creamery lives next door to the Norris, Stephanie. And so, you're, you own that property, and you're planning to, Victor, I guess, or there'll be a curator, somebody staying there?
Just talk to us about all of that.
Okay. Yeah, I was saying, it was great. So, I mean, my concern is the same as Stephanie's, because when I moved here seven years ago, behind the funeral parlor, you know, I had an experience of there was going to be condos and a, and it was going to be an art district type of thing. And then a warehouse popped up. So, you're concerned that things develop, and you can't really prevent it. That's my block. That's our block. And so, I'm concerned that, I, I want to see the historical integrity, just like Nancy does, with this neighborhood, because I love the neighborhood. And I want to see it sort of develop carefully and thoughtfully, you know, so. And that's, that's basically my comment. I'm within about eight hundred feet of it, and, and so, other than that, that's...
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Are there any other public comments?
Anita Protus, nine oh one Bay Shore Drive. I grew up on the corner of Gross and Orange. And the little white house next to my grandmother's home is now rented out rooms. And then you have the Pender House on the corner. They used to rent out rooms for people coming into Tarpon. And then across the street from the Pender House, you have apartments. They park on the street, too. And then, a little further down, you have homes that rent out rooms to tourists that come. So, what Mr. Kokolakis wants to do will fit right into the area, because further down Ring, they rent out rooms also. But they've kept everything in the homes historic, which you can do, and whatever the city decides to do, make it where they have to keep the homes historic, and they can't change them, you know? Leave them as they are on the exterior, do what they have to do on the interior. But I want you to realize that all around that area, people are renting rooms out. They're parking in the yards, on the side of the yard, behind the yard, down the alley. So, I, from what I'm hearing, what this gentleman wants to do is going to fit in with the whole area, but upgrade it. Upgrade it, so it'll fit in. And then, on Orange Street, further up, I sold the Protus property, and they've put in two townhouses. That was the plan that they wanted to do, to bring people into the downtown area. We have no hotel. And this is how we're going to house the people who come into our community, to see Tarpon Springs, walk Tarpon Springs. They get to live in these, spend the night, or rent these rooms in these historic homes. They stay historic, but what he's asking for is already there. And that's what you have to realize. They're renting rooms. Some of them are rented out as bed and breakfast. We have a house across the street from the Stammes' Corner at the church. They rent that out, and the house further down, yeah, on the corner of Tarpon, and I think it's, I forgot the name of the street there. But it's been restored, and people come into our community every weekend, during the week, and they rent these rooms, or they rent these homes, and they stay there. So, it's really not any different than what he's asking. But he's going to restore and preserve the building. That's why our famous bandleader of yesterday lived. His mother had it as a home where she raised her children, and then it sold. And years ago, the history tells you in the books how the cowboys used to come up from the Ancoat River and stay there. And they kept the horses there. There's pictures in the Historical Society, as we know, of what went on there. And it has a lot of history in it, and he has said at the last meeting that he was going to preserve a lot of the history of that place. But if, you know, if you let other people down the street rent homes, or rent rooms, or let people come and stay with them, it's no different than what he wants to do. But he's willing to preserve a historical site.
Okay. Are there any other public comments? Ma'am, you've had your opportunity as an affected party. And if there's somebody else that's with you that would like to make a public comment that hasn't made one, ma'am, you'll have another, you'll be able to make more comments during the conditional use again. We're going to go through this exact same process for the conditional use. Is there anybody else that would like to?
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
She was asking questions earlier. Would it be appropriate for her to go ahead and make a comment now, or would...
To make a comment?
Yeah, but I think earlier, she was, she was asking questions.
So, she would like to, and that's, would be consistent with the quasi-judicial process, that'd be fine. Ma'am, please come forward and make your comments, is that correct?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Comments.
Comments?
Previously, she was only asking questions.
Okay, thank you.
Nancy Subic.
No, you've, you're fine. We know who you are. Go ahead, please. Thank you.
I just wanted to know how, we have all, she's speaking about all these places that we have in the neighborhood that everybody's renting and everyone's renting. We're talking about eight rooms. How is that going to bring all these people to downtown? Eight rooms. And I live in the Pender House. I'm the third owner of that property. There's never been a renter in that property, as far as I know, so. And I've been there for twenty years. The house has been there for a hundred and ten years, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir, oh, yeah, Ms. Jackson, thank you for clarifying that. Ma'am, please come forward.
Hi, my name is Erica Switzer, and I'm the owner of Current's Restaurant on East Tarpon. And I just wanted to make a comment that I think it's admirable that we have people in our community that are willing to invest money and time into a restoration project like this. There's a lot of excitement going on right now with the downtown district. A lot of new things popping up, you know, a lot of new businesses. And we're seeing a momentum in the downtown area, and it's exciting. I have four children, and three of which, well, one graduated last year, but two of which are still in Tarpon Springs High School in the Leadership Conservatory. We have family that come in from out of town all the time. And I think it would be wonderful for them to be able to stay so close to the high school, close to us, right in the heart of our community, instead of looking elsewhere towards, you know, down towards US nineteen and what have you. So, there's a lot to be seen in our community. There's a lot to do in our community. And yes, it's a boutique hotel. It's only eight rooms. But it's something for people to stay and see what we have going on here. So, I just wanted to advocate for it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Mr. Jumper, are there any remote access comments?
We do not have anyone in attendance online at this time.
Okay, thank you. We're going to close the public hearing and go to commission comments. Vice Mayor Lunt?
You know, as I said before, I think the process is somewhat flawed, the way we do this. I know we're, we're working to amend it. I do see the need for this within the downtown area as well. And I see no additional facts presented with this that would change my decision on approving this. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Lunt. Commissioner Carr?
I've got no comments at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Eisner? I'm just enjoying everybody's, the screen results. Everybody's got the same election results on their screens. Okay. Commissioner Eisner?
I don't have any election results on my screen. I just want to, I just want to go down on that. Listen, I'm just happy to see the improvement. We do need to have places to stay over. We need parking and places to stay over. And I'm just glad that it's not a eighty-room, hundred-twenty-room, hundred-and-sixty-room fiasco. This is, it'll be a quaint little place, and I just wish you well with it, and that's all I really have to say. I'm just glad to see that it, it is building the positivity that I'm getting from people when I walk through the streets of Tarpon Ave. It, it's just nonstop, so, you know, how could I not like that? So, thank you.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Yes, I understand what the, the future land use and the changes. It only is going to be eight rooms. If you look historically, it's been a livery stable where people have stayed there overnight or for several periods. So, it does have history of serving as a, as a stay-in. So, I just think there's got to be a point where we provide lodging to the downtown area, but we don't influx it tremendously quickly. And this is a project that's a, a good stepping stone towards that area without providing too much of an influx of people coming in. And, you know, that building can easily be a building with eight people living there, eight separate rooms where people live in there permanently. So, it, it wouldn't be too much of a difference, and we got to start providing lodging and, you know, encouraging applicants for that for the downtown area. Thank you.
From my perspective, this is an excellent example of adaptive reuse of an old building. And Mr. Kokolakis is, certainly knows construction, and, and no one else would go to the detail that he did to identify what the deficiencies were and correct them, and quite frankly, turn it into a heritage-type project. I'm kind of looking forward to, and it's manifestation, as far as eight rooms. Our economic development approach that we're transitioning to is, is basically place-making, creating places for people to come and visit Tarpon Springs, and this is certainly consistent with that in the downtown. So, and that's consistent with our special area plan and everything else that we've talked about. It's not really creating an exorbitant amount of density in that sense. And if you look around that area, I, I don't see any other buildings in that area. Maybe the Masons or something at some point in the future or something. But I, I don't even know if that's on the radar, but I just don't see any other building that would be able to be used this way. So, I appreciate the project, Mr. Kokolakis. And again, this is the first part. We've got the conditional use we're going to talk to, talk about in a minute, which is going to get perhaps into some things that the residents would be more interested in hearing, anyway. Without further, if there are no other comments, I'd like to have a motion to approve Ordinance 2022-12, the Future Land Use Amendment.
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiottis.
Okay, yes. Ms. Jackson, we're going to have to have a reading of 2022-11, the zoning amendment.
Ordinance 2022-11 was published in the Tampa Bay Times, April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two, and October fifth, two thousand twenty-two. An ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the official zoning atlas of the City of Tarpon Springs for zero-point-three-two acres, more or less, a real property located at one hundred and one-hundred-and-eight North Ring Avenue, at the northeast corner of North Ring Avenue and East Orange Street. From zoning designation CRM, Conditional Residential Mix, to zoning designation SAP, Special Area Plan, and amending the transect based in-fill code for the sponge docks and community redevelopment area, SMART code, to include said property within the T4A transect zone, and amending all maps within the SMART code to reflect the expanded boundary, providing for findings and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. May I have a motion to approve in a second, please?
Motion, second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiottis.
Yes. Okay, that ends the item fifteen. Now, we're going to move on to item sixteen, Resolution 2022-29, Application 2280, Livery Stable. And this is the conditional use for the hotel. Ms. Jackson, if we could have the resolution read by title, go through the instructions of the quasi-judicial process, and swear in if there's any additional witnesses.
Resolution number 2022-29, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving application number 22-80, requesting conditional use approval to allow for a hotel within the existing building at one hundred North Ring Avenue in the T4A transect zone of the Special Area Plan, providing for findings, providing for conditions, and providing for an effective date. This is a quasi-judicial proceeding where the Board of Commissioners acts in a quasi-judicial, rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi-judicial hearing, it is not the board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi-judicial hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing, and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the Code of Ordinance, then the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the Code of Ordinance, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. At this time, will anyone who will be a witness or an affected party, please stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Okay. If I could have the affected parties come forward, state your name, and give us how you establish yourself as an affected party. We've, it's, we've got to do this all over again, yes, as, as we did before. It's a completely separate and independent process.
Mark Wood. I'm at four twelve East Tarpon, which is the Thompson Jukes House, and I'm probably a little bit more than five hundred feet away.
The Jukes House?
Yeah.
You're pretty close to five hundred feet.
Pretty close.
Ma'am, if you could come forward again?
Nancy Subic, three-three-four East Orange Street. I was wondering, he's, the gentleman who's wanted to do this project was talking about entering the parking spaces through the alleyway.
We're going to get into that. We're just trying to establish you as an affected party, and you did that. And I know where you live, so you are an affected party. You'll have your turn to ask that question in a minute. It's just a process we go through. Sir, would you like to come forward? Okay. All right, has there been any ex parte communications with the applicant? That anybody wishes to report? Okay. Ms. Vincent, if you'd like to proceed with your presentation.
Thank you. This is Application 22-80. This is a conditional use for a proposed eight-room hotel. The property contains point-three-two acres. And as of a few moments ago, the land use and zoning was completed and changed to the Special Area Plan and the Downtown Character District and the SMART code, T4A, which is residential plus retail and office. So, as we said, the proposed use of the property is a hotel with eight rooms. This would be operating within the existing historic building that's on, on the property now. And as been described by the applicant, you know, there'll be a small lobby and reception area. And then the two, the single-family home that's on the property, which was moved there in around two thousand fifteen, I believe, will remain as a single-family home. And so, this is just an aerial, aerial, aerial look at the property. Again, the single, the two, the single-family home on this property. And then this is the old livery stable and hotel building. There is an alley that, that actually is a functioning alley. I actually drove through it today. It goes all the way up and exits out either right or left onto the property. So, a little bit about the density. In the Downtown Character District, you have fifty rooms per acre. In the Downtown Character District, you have 50 rooms per acre. That's lodging density, not residential density. So, accounting for the entire property, the maximum you can have on the property would be 14 rooms, as proposed is eight. The hotel operations will be kind of managed somewhat off-site, but very close by, adjacent at 201 East Center Street. This is the applicant's property as well. It is basically, reservations are made online, check-in and checkout, you know, is, you know, probably through online or through the kiosk, and then service repairs can be made to the maintenance team at 201 through that kiosk or through the online system, and I'm sure the applicant can do a better job of explaining his operations than I can at this point. This is a conceptual site plan. It received early on. Again, this was, would be the proposed parking area as it's currently shown. Again, this is concept-only. They're showing an entrance off of Orange Street as well as off of the alley itself. This parking piece does need to go through a site plan approval process separately. You know, just for, you know, edification, you know, this hotel use itself as an adaptive reuse of existing structure is actually exempt from providing parking. Obviously, the applicant does want to have parking available, you know, to support the business, but under the SMART code section 4.6.2, it does not require reuse since parking, additional parking, since it is an adaptive reuse. And the parking, as I said, this will go through site plan approval. It will have to, you know, to meet our standards, we'll have to look at drainage and stormwater requirements and things of that nature. So, this is the site now, as I said, now it is part of this yellow of the Downtown Character District. So, this is a conditional use, so we do have to look at our standard review criteria in conformance with the Land Development Code. There really are no identified issues with that. The parking is above and beyond what is actually required by the code. They do have to obviously meet Florida Building Code for all of the renovations. And just the parking lot will also have to go through the Historic Preservation Board and get a certificate of appropriateness through them as well. So, the second criteria to review is, is the proposed use appropriate to the property in question and compatible with the area. You know, again, this is, it is an adaptive reuse of an old historic structure that frankly, the building itself is kind of like a square peg in a round hole, you know, under that previous land use and zoning of just basically single-family residential. You had some other uses, but really, you were limited with the land use and zoning to two units on all that property, so the hotel itself would had to have been nothing but a single-family residence prior to the action that you just took second reading on. So, that, you know, that in and of itself is, you know, is a little bit out of step with what, you know, the fact that it's actually a commercially constructed property in its appearance and its actual construction and how it's been used historically. So, we do think that the adaptive reuse of this is consistent with the mixed-use area with, you know, within the area there. It is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the special area plan. Regarding impacts to historical or environmental resources, we don't really see any, there's no issues really with environmental resources on this property. The site itself is noted as a contributing structure in our historic district, and so it will have to comport with. Any exterior changes would have to, any changes to doors, windows, anything like that would have to go to the Historic Preservation Board. We're not there yet. The parking lot itself, well, as I said, will have to go through the Historic Preservation Board as well. Again, as an adaptive reuse in the limited capacity of the, of an eight-room hotel, and given the noted mixed-use in the area, we do not think that this will adversely affect adjoining property values. It will not exceed the ability of the city to provide capacity or serve it with public facilities that are already present to the site, and it does provide for orderly redevelopment, efficient orderly redevelopment in the downtown. The staff recommendation of approval includes four conditions of approval. The first would be that the conditional use shall be contingent on approval of ordinance 2212, the Future Land Use Amendment, and the ordinance 22-11, which is the rezoning. Regarding that particular condition, the board did approve those tonight. However, there's still a 30-day hold on the effective date of those, of the land use ordinance, because it does have to be sent to the state, and there's a 30-day period for anyone that would want to try to appeal that, so, but that, that condition is met. The hotel shall be limited to a maximum of eight rooms, so if they want to increase that, they'll have to come back to the board and amend the conditional use. The site plan, and that would be for the site work, for the parking, would have to be submitted within one year, and the applicant must obtain any necessary building permits and Heritage Preservation Board approval for the, for the site modifications. We did have one written response in objection, and it is, that is in the record. The Planning and Zoning Board heard this on August 22, and they did vote unanimously to recommend approval, and there were two members of the public who spoke in opposition at the, at that meeting. Their concerns included the dislike of a parking area, parking lot on-site, the encroachment of commercial into the residential area, and excessive amounts of existing lodging in the area. One person also just really noted that there was a lack of affordable housing in the area and discussed some of the homelessness issues and things of that nature. So, with that, I'll stop and answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Vincent. Let's go to questions. Vice Mayor Lot.
I have no questions.
Commissioner Carr.
Yeah, Renee, a quick question. So, the condition is to only allow the max of eight units, but it's allowed up to 14?
If you, if you apply the density allowed, you know, under the SMART code, you would have a little bit more density available there, just as for lodging only, yes, so, but, I mean, that's, we feel that it is appropriate, you know, he's, that's what's been represented by the applicant, is eight rooms. That's what the public has understood, so we would like, we would recommend having that limit, and if they want to increase that in the future, then they could come back and ask for it.
So, it's putting a further restriction on what's available to the applicant, then, right?
It's restricting the number of rooms, hotel rooms, that they could put on the property to eight, yes.
Okay. And the only reason really is the fact that the applicant initially proposed eight rooms?
I think it's appropriate in the context that this is, and backing up to, you know, you do have residential in the area, you know, they've demonstrated a plan that can be, you know, sufficiently parked, even though they're not required to have the parking, but I just, I still think it's appropriate, you know, that's how it's been publicly held out, that it would be an eight-room hotel. I just, I think it's appropriate to have that condition in place.
Okay. Does that include the building next door, too?
No, it only includes the hotel building itself, correct.
All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Eisner.
Thank you, ma'am. I just have one quick question. Are we calling it a hotel because it's a hotel, or are we calling it a hotel because we really don't have a classification for Airbnb?
So, we have, within the, within the SMART code, you have three types of lodging recognized. You have hotel, you have an inn, and then you have transient lodging, which is like your Airbnb. The only thing that's permitted by right is an inn, but by definition in the SMART code, that is a, that's still a owner-occupied, you know, use, whereas the hotel does not have to be owner-occupied, so the only way to have it classified, to not have somebody living there full-time and operating it as an inn would be to go through the conditional use process of a hotel. Does that make sense?
Yes, but in Airbnb, you wouldn't have it, it would be the same.
The Airbnb would not have to be operated with somebody on-site. It still requires a conditional use. So, and the transient lodging, this is a little, another nuance that folks may not really realize, but the intent of the transient lodging in the Airbnb, the way that's regulated in our, in our code is, it's actually a residence. It's a, whereas a hotel room is not a residence, you know, it may not have cooking facilities and everything, so it's more, it's lodging versus, the Airbnbs are essentially single-family, you know, they're homes that then get rented out in their entirety, so they do operate a little bit differently.
Right, but they could have eight rooms in them as well.
They could, yes. They could.
Okay. You got, I have my answer.
Okay. Sorry if I danced around your question.
No, no, it's, I understand. It's a very small technicality, and I just want to make sure that people know the difference from your explanation, so, thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Eisner.
Okay, actually, I just, I'm sorry. The density for the Airbnb, the transient lodging, would be limited to the residential density, which on that entire property would be five units, including the house, so there is a difference with the Airbnb. It would be fewer units, I'm sorry, I wanted to make sure I clarified that.
Thank you, that's very important, yes.
It is very important, thank you.
Appreciate that.
Commissioner Kulyas.
I have no questions for Renee.
Ms. Vincent, I, the one condition I don't see up there, and this is probably going to be a question for Mr. Kokolakis, is the, any outside licenses that might be required, such as state level.
Hotel, yeah.
I know in doing a little research with a SpongeDocks motel, there's a distinction between the number of rooms, 25 or less does something else, and if we, if there is a, an outside license required, that would, I think that the answer is yes, that would be appropriate to add it as a condition, is that?
Correct, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
They have to have it regardless, so.
Well.
As a hotel, they have, they have to have it.
Just to make sure.
Yeah, I agree, it's a good condition.
Yes. I'll have more to say during the discussion. Okay, that ends the commission comments on this. Mr. Kokolakis, do you have any questions for Ms. Vincent?
No.
Please come up for your presentation.
Hello again. I guess just to clarify some points, it's my understanding that's all that happening, all that's happening here tonight is giving me the opportunity to complete a set of construction documents that I would in turn submit to the Heritage Preservation Board for approval and to the staff to ensure that it meets all applicable codes. We're not enlarging the building at all, we're not adding on to the building, it's not getting any taller. We're going to restore all the wood balconies, replace the one on the back, and probably after the engineers look at it, rebuild the one on the front with structural timber, but other than that, you know, the windows, the doors, everything will be restored to as close to original as possible. I understand that, you know, based on the current density, we would be permitted 14 hotel rooms. There's only eight because only eight fit, you know, it's not, you know, eight is the amount that you require at least feasibility to make it a viable hotel. We looked initially at four rooms above retail, we looked at four rooms above a cafe, we looked at all these different options, and either because of the mixed-use and the complexities with that, or just the feasibility of having a retail or restaurant operation that far off Tarpon Avenue, the hotel and having some economies of scale with the hotel made the most sense. I've said it earlier, my construction company's across the street, we've been there 32 years. For 15 years, we've had a property management company across the street in our building where Stumpy's recently opened. Through that office, we manage 68 commercial properties and 70 residential properties. We're across the street. We also are developing, and I received approval in the City of Dunedin, for 79-room hotel in downtown Dunedin, right across from Meese Hospital. Charleston Group is currently under contract to manage that property for us. They're managing an 11-unit hotel in Charleston, South Carolina. They haven't committed yet to this, but they're willing to look at it, and we have an existing relationship, you know, so that's kind of the, the overall plan of what we're looking at and why we kind of embarked on this hotel concept. As far as the site plan, yes, like I said earlier, there are two plans. We're going to look at what's the most efficient. This one, there is an existing curb cut on Orange. Preserving that curb cut is definitely an option and something we're considering. Any questions? Yeah.
Let's go to questions. Vice Mayor Lot, go ahead.
So, from my understanding, this proposed hotel is not going to be attended, correct? You're going to use a kiosk system?
Correct.
Will people be able to book this system online?
The, well, yes. They'll be able to book it online. There's a, there'll be a key code to get into the lobby area. In the lobby area, there's a kiosk where you get access to your particular room.
Okay, so, there's really nobody going to be visibly seeing who's in and who's out of this?
Correct.
Particular hotel? I mean, there's, there's no personal identification necessary other than a name, a phone number, and a credit card?
Well, there's security measures both to get into the building, and there's security measures both to get into the room. Some of the technology has where you scan your driver's license before you get access to the room, for example.
Are you planning to have, I don't know how to express this, outdoor areas?
No, if you look at the site, it's pretty tight. There's nothing, there's no available outdoor area on either side of the building, north, south, west, and on the east side is the parking lot.
Yeah, okay, so the, the parking lot, that you're saying, I'm looking at a diagram here, so.
Yes.
Spare me if it, it looks like the current survey, survey, but it also shows two wood decks on the back. Are those staying or going?
Those are gone.
They're gone.
And, but they will, we need an emergency egress from the second floor, so, in the back, so that will be built, and that will, you know, I guess, you know, and there'll be stairs there, so the guests on the second floor can exit the building.
Yeah, I understand.
It will be built out of wood, though, and not like aluminum or steel.
Yeah, I got you. It's not going to be a fire escape circa 1937.
Yeah.
Out of just general interest, how, what's the size of these rooms? What are they, are they just rooms? Do they have kitchenettes?
No, no kitchenettes, no kitchen, no cooking facilities. There are six of them are with a king-size bed, two are doubles. Each room is about 200 square feet.
About 200 square, and that includes a bathroom?
Correct. Bathroom and showers.
Yeah?
No bathtubs.
No more questions.
Commissioner Carr.
How long does the restoration process take for something like this? Would you estimate?
Well, the, the entire bones of the building are going to be made out of CLT, cross-laminated timber. That's actually going to be fabricated out of birch in Austria and shipped over and kind of flown in pieces and assembled on the inside of the building after we poured the new foundations. That's going to be the longest lead time item, because that comes in containers. So, the company's called Benderhals. The other, the other work is relatively easy. I mean, again, it's eight rooms with an open lobby and one stair. The windows and things like that, I mean, obviously, right now, there are supply chain issues with anything and anyone building anything, but I don't expect it taking longer than a year. The design process and the approval process is probably going to take longer, going through heritage and everything else.
And you've expressed this is a self-funded, just a project that you want to see to kind of get back to the community, in my understanding, to preserve the history of this building?
Well, I want to make money out of it, and I, and I did, you know, involve my kids and my wife and everybody else in the whole process, and some of this, you know, is just to give my kids that have left town, you know, reasons to come back. You know, we live in Dunedin, and everything we've done in Dunedin, the main purpose of it is to create an environment that our children that leave this community want to come back to, and it's worked, and it's worked in Dunedin, and it's working in Tarpon Springs, because Tarpon Avenue, I think, has gotten a vibrancy that, that's eluded it for a long time.
Do you feel that a hotel in this area would be beneficial to the local businesses?
Yes, I mean, I think there, there isn't, I, again, 32 years I've had my office here. We have, you know, architects, engineers, we work throughout the country, and when people come to Tarpon Springs to visit my office, I have a choice to put them on US-19, you know, or I bring them to Dunedin. on US-19, you know, and, or I bring them to Dunedin, and frankly, they go to the Holiday Inn Express in downtown Dunedin, because it's a, they can walk around and have a drink and have something to eat, uh, as opposed to being on US-19. So I, I strongly believe there's a demand, but something that complements the downtown core, something that fits within the downtown core, and, um, you know, and, and, and is part of the vibe that we've created in Tarpon.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Eisner.
Thank you, Mayor, I have two quick questions. Um, do you plan on putting out any, um, grills in the back or anything like that?
No, um, nothing good comes of it.
Well, I'm glad to hear that. Because I would like you to encourage people eating, you know, on Tarpon Avenue and whatnot.
Well, there's no refrigerators, there's no cooktops, there's nothing, maybe a mini fridge for, like, a, but there's no, this isn't an extended stay property. This is a property for a visitor that comes to our downtown core, wants to spend a couple of nights, uh, and enjoy the community.
Have you thought up a price range for what you would be asking?
There is a feasibility study, and, you know, with, you know, and they anticipate an average ADR of $170 a night. So it, it won't be your, your, your cheaper stay. Uh, it'll be someone that wants to be here, wants to be in a, in a sustainable property, everything from the mechanical systems to plumbing, um, we're researching, you know, PV panels for the roof, we're doing, everything about this project is going to be unique, and, 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 and hopefully people will be excited enough about it to, to pay for it.
I have no further questions, thank you.
Commissioner Cullias.
I like the site plan, especially with the parking, I, I understand your intent to, uh, just improve the building in the area and actually bring back good, its, uh, character, especially what it, what it's been in the past, and, um, the kiosk was my, my main question, and, uh, it's, you know, I, I know we're calling it a hotel with the semantics of wording, but it, it's, it, it, it's a better stay, and with the kiosk situation, um, helps promote walkability, you're going to have to go to that office over there, and you'll get to see the other areas nearby with stumpy's and whatnot, so it's, um, those questions were answered for me, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Kokolakis, I, I know there's, there's, um, uh, I would, a number of rooms are a factor as far as the types of licenses you get from the state, do you need any kind of a license from the state for this, or, um, have you explored that, or?
To be honest, uh, no, I have not explored it, um, but I've got no problem, you know, adding language in there that says I must comply with any applicable licensing requirement.
Okay. Um, that, that would be fine, I'm just, um, I, honestly, I don't know what the requirements are, I know they break it down between hotels, bed and breakfast, which, as Ms. Vincent said, the person stays there and so forth, so I, I don't know what those are, but, um, I do want to make sure that we, we cover that as well, that, I'm not concerned about you, but if something happens in the future and it changes, um, that's all the questions I have. Now, Ms. Jackson, I have a question for you.
Yes.
Ms. Vincent gets an opportunity to cross-examine if she wishes, and then this is an opportunity for the affected party to cross-examine.
Exactly.
That's what you meant by asking questions?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, got it.
I have some further questions.
Ms. Vincent. Wait, hang on a second, Vice Mayor Lund, yeah?
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I do have some further questions. Um, I'd like to get sort of back to the question of security. Um, so you have a kiosk, I walk in the door, I scan my driver's license, I use the P-code that you sent me on your phone, et cetera, or, or whatever, and I'm in my room. What happens after that? How, how is room access gated from that point on? So say I'm staying there for, for three days, I understand the initial entry, and is, is the, is there a key code to the, to the door? Is it a, is it a card? Is it a key?
The, the front door access and the back door access to the building is always going to be, um, with a, with a key card, or, or, or an app on your phone to unlock the, the electronic hardware. Um, and then on the inside, you will, the same app, you know, even similar to what, you know, Hilton has now, you walk up to your door, you have your app, it unlocks your door. It's unique to that individual, you know, you can't share it, you have to be on that phone with on that app.
Okay, I understand. Um, what happens if there's an emergency in this hotel? Who, who do they contact? I mean, they can't phone the kiosk, so what, what's your plans along this respect?
Well, I mean, it, at this point, you know, again, our property management company has 24 hours, 7 days a week, um, for our existing tenants, commercial tenants, and our residential tenants. So those will be the primary first calls, if anything, if anything happens or anyone needs anyone. If I wind up outsourcing the hotel operations to any third party like Charleston, um, then they'd be responsible, as far as the management company.
Okay, so you're, you're not sure right now if your intention is to keep your current management company or outsource it to some other company?
Eight units is small for m- most third-party hotel management operators to care about.
Yeah, I agree.
The only reason this company, and, uh, again, the Charleston Group, i- is that they're from a very similar environment, you know, in Charleston, South Carolina, and they've managed properties as small as 11. Uh, the only reason they would consider managing an eight-room hotel is because they'll be managing a 79-room hotel in Dunedin. So at this point, nothing is finalized there, you know, with them, so at, um, you know...
I got, so you got, you've got a way to go on the operational...
Correct.
... characteristics for this. So if I'm in a room and my plumbing goes awry, I, I need to phone some outside agency for it to get fixed?
Um, no, if your plumbing goes awry, you call the same number that my residential tenants in, you know, in Dunedin, for example, call.
Okay, so what about, what about, um, other hotel-type services, linen changes, that sort of thing? You're going to have staff in and out there during the day doing these kind of things?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, but, all right, that's, that's all the questions I have. I, I do have some overall security concerns for a kind of a no-visibility keylock type system, but that's just me.
Okay. Ma'am, if you've got some questions, I know you had some questions, uh, earlier, you, this is your opportunity to come forward and ask those.
Nancy Sue, uh, I have a question about the, the alleyway, can someone tell me what that numbers mean on the, you have a 1, 2, 3, and then there's that round something, and then what is that? Is the alleyway the blank part in the middle?
Ms. Jackson, may Ms. Vincent answer that? Or should the applicant answer that?
Um, well, she has the opportunity to ask questions of Ms. Vin- Ms. Vincent, so yes, it's fine, it's, it's, it's fine.
Thank you.
So, the numbers are referring to parking spaces, this is the alley itself, this is a tr- would be a tree, so a tree well here with a tree, so, um, just, you know, as shown here, you have a proposed entrance off of Orange Street, and then you would have potentially an entrance off of the alley itself into the parking lot, did, did that answer your question?
It does, but I don't see how you're going to have enough room with an alleyway and a whole bunch of parking spaces, there's houses there.
No, this is the, you know, this is, this is all their property, you know, this, and this is the alley that separates this property from the properties over here, let me, uh...
There's not enough room.
If I can find a better, there you go. So your alley's right here, and then, so their parking that they're showing is in this area here.
And that would be two rows with a, a thing in the middle? And there's enough room for all of that between the alleyway?
There, there is, functionally, there's enough room, yes.
Okay. And, um, I, I saw something that he was saying about in the other little house, that someone was going to live there and manage the place next door? Is that what I was understanding about what's going to happen to the other house, the little house, single residential house? I thought you said someone was going to be living there and maintaining it, then I saw something on center, Center Street, Center Avenue, I don't understand what's, what the col- what's...
I'll let the applicant respond to that.
Okay, all right.
As I said, um, we're still kind of working on the operations part, uh, but, yeah, the single-family home will always stay a single-family home, you know, I, I do envision, you know, it making sense, and I do, we have a long-term tenant there that I have no intention of evicting, but she sort of is in the hospitality business, so I was planning on approaching her and seeing if she'd be interested in, in somehow or another getting involved. But that's, you know, again, a, a detail that has not yet been worked out. If I can get Charleston Group to manage it, then, you know, and, and 24/7 and operate it, then, um, that'll just remain a single-family home, um, and that's pretty much the response.
Ma'am, did you have any other questions of Mr. Kokolakis?
I'm not sure who's supposed to have it. Um, who is going to maintain that alley? Currently, I'm assuming the city of Tarpon Springs does, but if this alleyway's going to be used for some commercial hotel, is it going to be paved? Well, is that something the historic society would have to, you know, who's going to maintain that road? I'm sure that he doesn't want cars going up and down that holy road.
So at least the portion of the alley that is adjacent to this property will have to be upgraded in some way, and that'll be part of the site plan review process, so it will, it will be improved to some extent, what that will be required when it goes through the check to review committee. Uh, but it is a, it's a city alley, it's a, you know, so it's ultimately, you know, long-term, it's the city's alley to, all alleys belong to the city, so.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Um, ma'am, you, you asked questions, now you have an opportunity to make a comment if you'd like, do you have any comments that you'd like to make? No? Okay, let's go to, uh, public comments.
There, there was another affected party that was sworn in, I don't know if he had questions.
Oh, yes, please come forward, sir. Thank you, Ms. Jackson. You, that's you?
Yes.
Thank you. I, I appreciate, uh, you, you addressed part of my security concerns. Uh, I've only had the experience at one Airbnb, one Airbnb, I mean, you call it a boutique, but you've got eight rooms, which are basically eight Airbnbs, eight Airbnbs in one location. So I guess one of my concerns is the, obviously, the security, which is, I think you're addressing. Uh, the other thing is, and the parking lot in the back, is I know how that affects Bob and Nancy's, um, how is this, is this going to be lit 24 hours? Is it going to be having lighting all over the parking lot and, uh, those sorts of things? It's going to be a well-lit area, um, you know, that certainly is kind of invasive to the houses right behind it.
And so we have, you know, we don't allow light to spill, so, you know, the light, any light that is going to be on the property, it has to be directed, directed downward. Um, and having said that, we do have minimum lighting standards for parking lots that, you know, so, you know, finding that balance is part of the site plan review process, you know, to make sure that we don't have, you know, lights blaring over onto adjacent properties, but yet we have enough lighting, you know, for security.
So the operational thing hasn't been decided, the way I understand, so, um, as far as the, certainly, the security is a concern of mine, uh, just having people coming and going, and, uh, I, it sounds to me you want a quality hotel or a quality establishment, so people can do short-term stays, but, um, that's a tough one to control if you have nobody on site when you have eight into a room, so, uh, that's, is one of my concerns. Um, and then, of course, making that parking lot in the back area, as far as it, uh, we, I don't want to see it turned into a thoroughfare, you know, if it's going to be preserved to Nancy and Bob's, you know, brick and all that, all that good stuff needs to happen in my mind. So, anyway, that was, that was it, security basically in the alley and, uh, things of that nature are, are my concerns, so, thank you.
Mr. Kokolakis may make closing comments, is that right?
Yes, he has an opportunity to respond, yes.
I just wanted to say that everything's a balance. Um, you don't want an 80-room hotel downtown, but you want full-time staff, and you can't have a full-time staff on, on anything less, you know, there's a reasonable number of rooms to offset the cost of having someone 24/7. You're worried about security, but you don't want a parking lot that's lit where it would be a nuisance, you know, but we all know that a lit parking lot is much safer than a dark parking lot. So I recognize everything, and like I said, I, I've been here and been part of this community for a very long time. The parking lot won't look like a Publix parking lot, but it will be safe. Um, access to the rooms and the building will be safe, um, but, you know, it, it's similar to an Airbnb, where someone kind of comes with a code and goes in, I get it, there is exposure there, um, and we're going to do the best to ensure that our guests are safe and that, you know, all eight guests are safe that are there at that same time. Um, but, you know, it's a business, and it's a risk, and it's exposure, and we're willing to take that risk and do the best that we can to mitigate that risk. Um, that's the comment.
Thank you, Mr. Kokolakis. Um, let's go to public comments now.
Well, they each get an opportunity to give a statement if they would like to.
A closing statement or, or whatever.
Or comments, and then they can...
Would you like to make a closing statement? No?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Now, public comment, yes.
Public comments. Anybody would like to make a public comment? Okay. Mr. Jumper, are there any remote access comments?
We do not have anyone in attendance at this time.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's go to, uh, close the public hearing, and we're going to go to commission comments. Vice Mayor Lund.
Um, I have no further comment, thanks.
Commissioner Carr.
Yeah, a couple of comments, this is, I would say, a dream come true to many business owners in downtown Tarpon Springs, to many residents and throughout Tarpon Springs. Um, I, I want to say thank you to the applicant for bringing this forward, one, preserving this building, two, providing a, a place for, a quality place for people to stay that come visit in the downtown district, um, and also preserve the, um, the historic feeling of, to the, to the district itself. Having 16 visitors, let's say it's full occupancy at two people per room, that's a significant amount of visitors to restaurants and ice cream shops and bars in downtown, uh, to help the, the vibrancy of downtown, enhances the downtown area as well, too. Uh, I'm super, super excited about this opportunity here, and, again, just want to say thank you for, for taking the time and effort to put behind this project. I know you work on a lot of large projects that are much, on a much higher scale than this, and, uh, it speaks volumes, and I think that it's going to be received very, very well throughout Tarpon Springs, I appreciate it.
Okay. Commissioner Eisner.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to wish you the best of luck, I think it's a positive, and I love positives, so I am for it.
Commissioner Cullias.
Yes, I'm for the project, and, and as the smart code, uh, 4.6.2, uh, just the rebuilding and the restoring of that building doesn't require additional parking, the applicant has demonstrated, uh, that they will provide enough adequate parking for the area, and, uh, our city, I believe, is working on adding additional parking off of Orange Street with some street designs in, in the future, and, uh, and I hear some of the applicant, or some of the residents' concerns, I, no one wants to protect single-family home zoning more than I do, but this is a, this is a building that has the potential to, uh, provide, uh, you know, bring guests to the area, could very well be a, you know, five-unit building, and let's say it was, you know, changed into a mixed use with retail at the bottom, you'd have a lot more traffic than what, um, the applicant's requesting right now, so I, I think it's a good fit, and, um, that area, you won't be venturing too much off from, you know, intruding into your single-family home zoning, so I understand your concerns, uh, but the applicants, you know, is doing their best to bring out the, the best in that neighborhood, so I appreciate it, thank you.
Mr. Kokolakis, as a former engineer, I wish you minimum headaches. I know what it's going to take to get this thing the way you're describing it, and I know you're good at what you do, so I, I hope you enjoy the journey as well, so we're looking forward to having it open someday. That's all I have, um, if I could have a motion and add the, um, state license requirement or whatever regulatory licenses to add as a condition, I would appreciate that.
Question of approved resolution 2022-29 with staff's conditional, or with staff's conditions, um, with the addition of, um, state licensure, uh, as a business as well, too.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Cullias?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lund?
Yes.
Mayor Vadezios.
Yes. Thank you, everybody. Okay, we're going to go on to item 17, ordinance 2022-30, amending the charter allowing BOC to direct certain powers to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Ms. Jackson, if I could ask you to read that ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2022-30, the second reading of this ordinance will be held on December 6, 2022, and will be published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on November 23, 2022. An ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida submitting to the electors of the City of Tarpon Springs, a proposed amendment to Section 12 of Article 2 of the city charter to allow the Board of Commissioners by a supermajority vote to direct certain powers to the Planning and Zoning Commission, providing for severability, providing for conflict, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date hereof.
Thank you. City manager, of course, I assume Ms. Vincent's going to make a presentation?
Yes.
Not so much a presentation, it's just a bit of a discussion. So after our previous review of this, which had, if you recall, we were moving toward a more, much more specific charter amendment that would allow the Planning and Zoning Board to approve site plans and conditional uses on properties up to one acre, after discussion, we, in order to get this right and not seal something in the charter that could become very potential to, or very difficult later on, once something's in the charter, to remove it, what we're suggesting is that we clarify the language in the charter that would allow, specifically would allow the Board of Commissioners by a supermajority vote to assign additional duties to the, to the Planning and Zoning Board. And then that, that, the mechanism for that would actually be to amend the land development code and, you know, lay those things out specifically in the code as to what those additional duties would be. Obviously, we wanted to go with supermajority, we're recommending that because it, you know, provides a little more stability. Obviously, this would become board-specific, you know, it could change from board to board through years, but that's why, so that's why we're recommending the supermajority vote. So this gives us time, and it also allows us to determine, you know, through the, through the referendum process, if that is something that the public even wants to consider. So that's, that's where we, what we're presenting, and, you know, hopefully, we're, well, that doesn't work, we'll take another swing at this based on board comments tonight.
Okay.
Mayor, just for a second, what we're attempting to do with this is to try to come to this point. If there are substantial changes to something else, we still have the opportunity to do another first reading next meeting. If there's a substantial change, if this isn't what you, we're trying to get to the point from listening to you last time, where you want to be. If this is not it, but you come to consensus of a little bit a different way, we'd still have the opportunity to do a separate first reading in a week at the next meeting, and then still have the second reading on December and have the ballot language, the next, it would all still flow in. So, so if you're not comfortable or want another way to go, we kind, that's why we made sure it was brought forward now, that, again, it'd have to be a substantial change where we'd have to do that, but we do have the opportunity to adjust this, depending on what the board says. We just tried to do it with the best input from what we heard at the last meeting, to try to give you something and give you a gauge if the people in their vote, you know, want this to happen, or obviously, if they voted down, then, then they don't, so that was our attempt in this.
All right. Let's go to public comments on this item. Are there any public comments concerning this item? Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Mr. Seaman, Merle Seaman is here this evening. He's the chairman of our Planning and Zoning Commission, and I'd asked him if he could come and give us the Planning and Zoning Commission's view of what this request is.
Merle Seaman, 1161 Marina Drive. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to be here tonight to comment on the proposed change in the charter. P&amp;Z Board sort of initiated this proposed change at a workshop that we held several months ago when we requested for staff to take a look at, at this situation. There were several reasons we felt like such a change would be appropriate. First and foremost, we thought having the ability for P&amp;Z to have final authority on simple items like some site plan reviews and some conditional use applications would streamline a sometimes lengthy and complicated process and help residents get some relatively simple approvals in a shorter time. Often, this could cut as much as a month or so off of their approval process. Secondly, this change could also assist you in shortening your often lengthy agendas. Seems to me even very simple items and a good, a good one, or a good option to look at for that was the recent conditional use approval to allow a paint booth in a building that already had a paint booth in it. It still took 15 or 20 minutes of your time in, in your agenda review, and that's time you could better use for some of the larger issues that you're fighting. I'm sure you all already noticed that the proposed ordinance, at this point, actually, all it does is allow you to consider a future ordinance or ordinances that would allow you the option of assigning final approval authority to P&amp;Z for certain types of items, which would be allowed by state law. Before this ordinance can be approved, it must be also part of a referendum, of course, as well. So what they're proposing tonight doesn't in any way change anything yet at this point. It just allows you the option to potentially change things in the future without having to go back to the charter revision. The currently proposed ordinance actually, or no, I'm repeating myself here, okay. I realize some BOC members have concerns about how to limit the delegation of authority so that it does not change the process for larger, more complicated projects, and that's certainly a valid concern. I think ultimately, when we reach that point, we can come up with ways to achieve a workable solution to this potential problem. I could see where it might involve both an acreage and a dollar value threshold, or something like that, to ensure that the project is both small and simple. Another approach that we have talked about would be to simply put the small and simple items, or handle them in a way such that they could be put on your consent agenda so that any BOC member could pull the item if they had problems or questions about it, but it would still expedite processing if nobody had problems or questions. And such an approach also would help with the concern that was expressed when we talked about this before, about the potential changes in the makeup of the board and, and of P&amp;Z, and how that might affect decisions in the future. Anyway, there's a lot to consider here, and today's action is just the first step in a lengthy process involving a lot of discussion and requiring further action from you before anything would actually change. I encourage you to support the item and allow the opportunity for consideration by citizens in a referendum, as well as the opportunity for your further consideration of how to make this idea work and improve the process for small, simple projects to better and more quickly serve the citizens of Tarpon Springs. If it's appropriate and anybody has questions, I'll try to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Seaman. Let me finish up with the public, well, there, I think there were no other public comments. Let me check with the remote access. Mr. Jump, is there anyone, remote access?
And we do not have anyone attending at this time, sir.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to the commission, Vice Mayor Lund.
You know, I have some small concerns about the policy that we're setting here. It seems to me that every other board that we have that has authority at all actually got their authority through a referendum process, and what we're doing here seems to be usurping that referendum process and, and giving the board additional powers to assign authority that it doesn't have currently. That's kind of my only thought stream on this. I understand and agree with Merle on, you know, we can do a better job of what we're doing with, with moving permits and planning and zoning stuff through. It just seems to me that, that we need to think about, is this a policy that we want to set? What's to prevent the next board, or us further going down saying, well, we want to expand our, our authority in other regions as well?
Right. No, I, I understand.
I think we need to tread carefully.
Yeah, it's a good, good observation. Let me, Commissioner Carr.
Thanks, mayor. When's the next charter, Mark, when's the next charter review committee due?
There's no set requirement. It's got to be at least every five years. We could have one next year, you could have one, the next one would be, see, I was on one, it would be in the five years. It would have to be at least 2024 would be the next one.
Okay. At minimum, right?
No law, no later than 2024.
Okay, got it. Renee, I've got a quick question for you, where it says, Planning and Zoning Commission 2, you have advised, is struck out, and then perform such duties as directed by the Board of Commissioners. So if this is adopted, at that point, the Board of Commissioners would need to create an ordinance that the Planning and Zoning Board is to advise the Board of Commissions?
You wouldn't have to do anything, because it's in the existing land development code, that's what it says that they do. So if you wanted to change that, then you would have to amend the land development code and the, the duties and authorities under that section of the land development code. So, no, I don't believe you would need to, to do anything if this is adopted, if you don't want to provide additional powers or duties.
And is there two readings on this, is that right?
Yes, so.
Okay. I mean, I like this language better than what it was before, and how, I appreciate the effort in that. I think there's a lot behind this. We, we had a, a committee, a charter review committee go through these a couple of years ago, and I do think it would be valid and a good time, or a good thing for the next charter review committee to review this one as well, too. So instead of the board pushing this forward, although we have the duties and the right, or we have the right to do this, I think it would be good for the charter review committee to dig into this a little bit further on the next revision, there.
Okay. Is that it, Commissioner Carr?
Yep.
Yeah, Commissioner Eisner.
Thank you, mayor. So I looked up the definition of supermajority, and it's three out of five. What supermajority are we referring to? Is this four out of five? Is it five out of five?
Four out of five.
Okay. So can this be a trial temporary type thing for 90 days, 120 days, six months, to see how it works?
Considering, I suppose it could. I mean, I don't know that, you know, if this got adopted, it's just laying the framework to be able to then change our land development code to do whatever. Yes, you could put something in place, and if you didn't like it, you could repeal the ordinance or change it again, but I don't think that's exactly what you're asking. I'm not, you know.
I'm not, but, you know, in, in our discussion, we had that discussion of which properties would fall under their jurisdiction versus what we should be dealing with. And when you have that, there's going to be what falls through the cracks.
Sure.
So rather than pushing this through and getting it through a referendum, and then we have the issue of undoing it, why not have that trial time to investigate it? Because it's something we haven't done. That's all.
So, yeah, I guess, so what, what this particular ordinance is doing is simply allowing the board to take a future action, should you so choose, by ordinance. It doesn't put anything in place other than the ability for the Board of Commissioners in the future to amend our existing land development codes and processes to allow the Planning and Zoning Board some additional duties or authority. So until that takes place, nothing really changes. Does that?
Yes, but if it's, if it's working well, then it can be pushed in at the next referendum vote.
Okay, I think we're, can you help me, Mark?
Probably doing two different things. You can't put this in place without that charter, that you can't put a trial in without the charter.
Exactly.
What the charter vote would give you is the ability to do that. Do a change to land development code and put a timeline on it, change it in four months if it doesn't work, but you can't do anything until the charter changes.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Commissioner Cuyas.
Yeah, no, I appreciate everyone's comments. Renee, I've been able to just read it, and I'm, I'm willing to, to go through with this to see what type of changes we can and can't do, but I'm very hesitant to allow too much power with certain properties, and, you know, we're only going to be here for so long, so willing to see where we can go with it, but I am hesitant on some, some decisions and how much authority there is, so, thank you.
Yeah. Ms. Vincent, I want to thank you for tackling a very tough problem, and I had a conversation with the city manager today, and also had a conversation with Mr. Seaman as well. You know, these charter amendments, we shouldn't be moving forward with them as a commission unless we completely understand what we're doing with them. And I'm just getting, getting a sense right now that we're kind of trying to make it work, but we're not really sure how it's going to work. And because of that, and there's absolutely no doubt in my mind that a charter revision commission would do a much better job at fleshing this out. They would actually have a conversation with each commissioner, the city manager yourself, Mr. Seaman is the Planning and Zoning Commission chairman, and probably put together, construct a referendum question, and, and actually decide how to approach this in a very meaningful way, and have answers for this commission. When they come and present, well, this is the question we would like to, we recommend to you that we ask the residents, and this commission would be able to ask questions, probably would have the answers before that, because they would be able to communicate with a charter revision commission to get those answers ahead of time. So what, rather than taking a vote on it tonight, I mean, unless the commission wishes to take a vote, what I'd like to do is table this particular item, and then, until we have the next charter revision commission, look at it. And if you want to move ahead with a vote, we could certainly do that as well. That's my recommendation.
I'm good for tabling it.
I think it's prudent.
Pardon me?
I think it's prudent, mayor, to do that.
To table it, yeah. I don't have any issue with it. I just want to make sure that what we present to the residents, we're giving them something that we're comfortable with, and I just don't see as comfortable. I, the conversation I had with the city manager, and, and, and don't get me wrong, I, this is the best that you can come up with. We don't have the benefit of a city attorney that we could sit down and, and each of us talk over right now, so that's part of the issue. But we certainly, you know, I don't want to go ahead and, and turn this down. I mean, I, you don't vote on it and say no, because quite frankly, I, I think that wouldn't be fair to the P&amp;Z Board. I know what they're getting at, I completely agree with them. It's the implementation of it that, that I'm concerned with, that's all. And if we want to go ahead and table it, then we would need a motion to that effect with a second, and, and then we don't need to add a date to it or anything like that. It's just at the proper time, city manager could remind us to bring it back to the, back to the commission and direct that it be heard by the, by this charter revision commission. So if I can have a, unless the commission has any other questions.
No, I make a motion to table ordinance 2022-30 until the next charter revision committee.
I'll second that.
Is that acceptable, Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Cuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lund?
Yes.
Mayor Vadezios.
Yes. Okay. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Ms. Vincent. The next item is probably equally as challenging. Ordinance 2022-31, amending the charter strategic plan implementation. Ms. Jackson, if, if we can have that read by title.
Yes, ordinance number 2022-31. The second reading will be on December 6, 2022, and will be published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on November 23, 2022. An ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida submitting to the electors of the City of Tarpon Springs, proposed amendment to Section 8 of Article 2 of the city charter to provide for a public hearing no later than June 30 of each budget cycle for budget priorities, to provide for the implementation of a strategic plan for the city to be updated every three fiscal years, providing for severability, providing for conflict, providing for codification, providing for an effective date hereof. providing for severability, providing for conflict, providing for codification, providing for an effective date hereof.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Seaman. He's on his way out. Okay, Ms. Vincent.
So the only change that, you had this ordinance in draft form at a prior meeting, the only change that is in this ordinance is on the subparagraph I regarding the strategic plan. We did, we added the word citywide to, so that was part of the board's direction. So this is pretty much largely as it was previously presented with that one change.
Thank you. Are there any public comments? Mr. Jump, is there any remote access comments?
And we do not have anyone in attendance at this time.
Okay, let's go to commission comments. Fight.
Was there a public comment?
Oh, Mr. Gettis, did you have a comment? Go ahead.
David Ballard, Gettis Jr., Georgia Avenue, Palm Harbor. Thank you, Mayor. I'm not really quite sure what this ordinance presents in relation to the, to the city charter. But I do know that I have complications with the Pine Ellis County Home Rule Charter in that in the section, again, 2.04Q, where there's a, a transfer of function and county power. It would be more of an internal transfer based on Chapter 163 of the statutes. It doesn't say, doesn't say, you know, circumstantially to grant power. It says a, a transfer. And I feel as though these, these terms in, in Chapter 153 of the Florida State Statutes, it says supplemental powers or additional powers. I, I, I see some, a little slight shade of difference between a total transfer of function and power and a supplemental power or a, a circumstantial grant of power. So I'm, I'm still kind of digging through the weeds of, of, you know, how my thought process needs to go on, on where I'm thinking. But a total transfer of function and power in certain simple circumstances would be a usurpation as, as referenced. And I, I would recommend all possibility to be able to reel certain things back in should need be. If I made any sense on any of that, but thank you for letting me share.
Thank you, Mr. Gettis. I, I know you've been at it a very long time on this and you're probably, I know you're catching me cold. Ms. Vincent, do you have anything to offer on that or?
I think with this particular amendment, just for the record and anybody else that, because I kind of jumped kind of past it. So what this particular amendment does is that it adds a requirement in the charter that we conduct a public hearing at the beginning of each budget cycle no later than June 30th to obtain public input on the budget prior to it actually being developed. And then the second addition, and these are things that are being added to the, for the Board of Commissioners responsibilities. You know, then obviously through the city manager and how things are administered. The, the second thing that's being added is to implement a citywide strategic plan for the city. The strategic plan shall be utilized for budgeting and capital project planning decisions and shall be updated every three fiscal years, beginning October 1, 2025. So that's the extent of this particular set of amendments.
Yeah, I think if anything, it, it actually gives the residents a little more authority to charter direction than the commission. And I think that's what it boils down to. What, this is a first reading and what I would ask you to do is contact Ms. Vincent's office and, and maybe get a little more clarification concerning your interest and how those mesh with what we're proposing this evening, rather than trying to, trying to understand every, because I know you, you have, it's a very complicated matter that you described and I very much appreciate you keeping an eye on everything in that regard. But I, I honestly am not prepared to, and thus speaking for myself, not be able to, to address that tonight to your satisfaction, Mr. Gettis. So, okay. Is there any, we, we didn't have any public comments or no, Mr. Jump, again, were there any remote access comments?
And we do not have anyone in attendance at this time.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to commission comments. Vice Mayor Lunt.
This is exactly what we discussed. It's straightforward. It puts more power in the people. It means us going through a regular strategic plan. It means getting the public involved in our budget. Really on in the game rather than after we've kind of already decided where the money's gonna be spent. So I'm 150% behind this. Look forward to seeing the charter verbiage in the.
Okay. Commissioner Carr.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. So there's, there's multiple things that the board can do here is, the one's a resolution, which is a one reading, and then it becomes law, basically. Second is ordinance, and city attorney could, could correct me. Second is an ordinance, two readings and it becomes law. Third one is putting in the charter, then it's really difficult to, to change. So to start with, I think it would be good to, to put a resolution in place, just to have something in place from our standpoint, from a board. I'm in full support of both of these items. I think it's a good idea to have a, a resolution. And then as a board ourselves, we feel it's best. And then I'm agreeing, I'm in agreement to send it to the residents, ask them to adopt it into the charter as well, too. But I do think it's important for other commissions to say, even if the, the residents don't feel that, it's important enough to add it to the charter. I think it's important for the board ourselves to put it in resolution to say for future boards, until it's repealed from another board, that you have this meeting no later than June 30th to obtain public comment and also do the strategic citywide plan as well to update. So I'm in favor of this and I'm also in favor of putting a resolution in place to, to seal there's something in place also.
Thank you. Commissioner Eisen.
Well, we spoke about this, so I am in favor of either way that we do this. I definitely ran on transparency and I'd like to have the input from residents as far as how we spend the money and at least listen to the, what they want, rather than telling them the way we decided and then catching hell afterwards. So I don't care which way we do it, as long as we do it.
That's fine, yeah. I mean, the more, the better in this regard. Commissioner Cullias.
I'm in full support. I, you know, definitely want the public to be involved through it all and I, you know, just looking back at the last couple of years, I've seen that the, the first and second public meetings on, on the budget are pretty much the shortest meetings we have all year. So it's good to get the residents involved early, get their input and try to do everything to the best of their wishes. So thank you.
Thank you. City Manager Lacorice, I, I sent you an email about some proposed language. Did you see that, that for tonight, for this particular ordinance?
Don't think so.
Okay. Let me explain. It's, it's okay. And I was hoping that maybe Ms. Vincent, you would have passed it on to her, but the, the, again, Ms. Vincent, I very much appreciate the work on the staff and again, we, we don't have the benefit of a city, city attorney that would be involved in this matter. We have a charter provision that does the exact same thing for the comprehensive plan. And the reason why that was put on there was because it wasn't being updated regularly. So the Charter Revision Commission thought that, well, we need to, but we need to make sure it gets updated. And also they, they wanted it updated every three years and they also created an effective date. I think the idea behind the strategic plan was very similar to, at least the idea of, of placing it in the charter is very similar to the comprehensive plan and also synchronizing it with the update cycle for the comprehensive plan, which would be every three years. Now, what's proposed is 2025, is that right?
Yes, sir.
That's what is being proposed. We started on the comprehensive plan in 2020. And so, and that was the, also the date that the comp plan was supposed to be updated and we're still working on that. Is that correct, Ms. Vincent?
It, yeah, it says that to review and update every three fiscal years, beginning October 1, 2020, all elements of the comprehensive plan. So.
So what, what I would, I gave, I thought I said maybe I queued, it didn't get in there. But basically what I did was I took your language that was in, that you were proposing, took the comprehensive plan language and basically did almost a duplicate for the strategic plan and synced it up so that the comp, the, the strategic plan would be updated 2023, which would be obviously next year, but that would sync it up with a comp plan as well. So is that correct?
So, I mean, the way this reads, it says you have to update the comp plan every three fiscal years, beginning October, so like, the first time, I took that to mean is the first time it should have been started October 2020.
Right.
I think we're a little bit behind that, frankly.
Right.
And then this one, I, it was written as every three fiscal years, beginning October 2025. So I think, are you trying to marry them up so that they're occurring at the same time or the, one before the other? I, I understand, I'm trying to understand where you're.
Yeah, basically what I, I think they ought to be updated together at the same time and that's all I'm getting at. And, and the 2023, if, if we could have gotten the comp plan updated a little quicker, which would began that in 2020 as well, then we would be looking at an update. Doesn't mean you have to update the entire plan. It was just basically some housekeeping and some changes and amendments. So that's the same idea. I guess the question I have, and, and Ms. Jackson, you're the only attorney that I'm seeing right now. If there is some amendment to the language for the second reading, this would, the same deal, is that right? We could have another, a first.
Have another first reading next week if it's substantive change to change it.
I think that answers the question. Maybe we can take a look at that. Basically, it does the exact same thing that is in the language, but it actually, it, it's, it just parallels what we've got on the, on the comprehensive plan. So it doesn't look like it's different. That was the intent, that the two plans, as a matter of fact, if you read the comp plan, it says all master plans need to be updated every three years, too. And that, you know, they're very hardcore to have these plans updated, so rather than setting, sitting on the.
And I'm not sure, I don't know if Ms. Jackson, off the top of her head, would know, as though I don't see that, from all of your experience, I don't see that as a major change, do you? Although we could do another first reading and the bunch of, but I don't see just synchronizing the data as a, as a change in the elements of the.
Because this, this hasn't, it actually has not been advertised yet. Fire, because it gets advertised prior to second reading. So the title, it doesn't affect the ordinance title. It just, the only thing that's in the ordinance title is it does say every three years. You know, is, I think what the mayor's homing in on though is when, when does that three-year cycle begin? I think you're just trying to marry it up with the comprehensive plan. So I don't see those substantive changes to what we're trying to do that would necessitate like a third reading, if you will.
Right.
I agree. I think it's a clarification more than anything.
Yeah, let me see what I've got. Just pull it up and then I'll just read it to you so you'll know for sure.
Can I ask a question, Mayor, to the?
Yeah, go ahead.
Renee, so I'm assuming it's your staff that's gonna be lifting this, right? So.
That remains to be seen, but right, right now, I've been coordinating the, you know, the first strategic plan, coordinating with the, with the consultant. I, whether or not that duty will stay with me, I, I don't know. It's ultimately the city manager's responsibility, so.
I'm not gonna be on the board. Mark's, doesn't seem like he's gonna be on the board either. So if, if both of them are required to be updated at the same time, is it a difficult thing for staff to do at the same time or is it kind of better to have them offset a little bit to give time to be able to, to update both of them? Would be my question.
My department, I, I would honestly prefer that they not be going, trying to go lockstep, but I mean, we'll find a way to get it done regardless. You know, I, I feel like the strategic plan is something that will probably continue to, you know, utilize some services to help, you know, do a quick up, you know, do the community input and things that are necessary to, to, you know, to update the plan. So it's, you know, it, it just says that they're, they're on the same cycle, you know, it might take one longer than the other. You know, there's, it doesn't say how long you have to do them. It says that they have to be updated every three years. So, you know, I think we have some, some room to, you know, juggle schedules as necessary to do that.
Question?
Just, that's my only concern with aligning them together would, would be that staff timing.
No, that's okay. I mean, I.
That's not my decision to make, so.
No, I, no, I don't, to me, that's a, a, you know, I, I think the two have to be integrated the way
Right.
we're doing it. But that would be something that obviously is gonna be the city manager's objective and, and, but we can talk about that further or, you know, with the staff and things between now and the time it gets implemented. But I'm talking about the question now for the, for the residents to take a look at it. But what we have right now for the, for the comprehensive plan, it says to review and update every three fiscal years, beginning in October 1, 2020, all elements of the comprehensive plan, in addition to all implementation, master plans in existence currently are in the future. Now, that's what item H reads. And, and then the original language in the backup this evening, it's to implement a citywide strategic plan. The strategic plan shall be utilized for budgeting and capital project planning decisions. Okay. And what I did was I picked up on the comp plan and, and basically the strategic plan is a little broader than just the budgeting and capital project planning. It's to review and update every three fiscal years, just like the comp plan says, to review and update every three fiscal years, beginning October 1, whatever date we decide. A citywide strategic plan. The strategic plan shall be implemented and utilized for creating city policy consistent with its mission statement, core values and vision statement that includes budgeting and capital project planning decisions. And so basically, the whole idea of the strategic plan was not just for budgeting and capital project, but also to, whatever we do, it should be consistent with those ideals that we had agreed to and approved. That's all. And so it, it makes it a little more specific, but we would bring that, at least I would ask that we would bring that back. We could run the two parallel and y'all can take a look at it and make a decision on that. Go ahead.
I've got one more comment. I mean, you, you, you bring a, a great point, though, Mayor, in this, to review and update every three years instead of to implement a citywide strategic plan, because we have a citywide strategic plan. It just needs to be updated, so there's no reason to implement a new strategic plan for the city. So that, I do think that makes sense.
We've already up, yeah. So let's just bring it back next week and then, Ms. Jackson, this is your last evening with us, is that correct?
It is, yes.
So you're lucky. Let's bring it back next week and, and we can figure out who's ever in Ms. Jackson's seat next week. Maybe they can look at it ahead of time, so. So let's, that's the questions I have, Vice Mayor Lunt, I mean, comments I have, Vice Mayor Lunt, you have, you have the light on.
I, you know, I think we just need to amend the effective date of the strategic, of the strategic plan within this. It doesn't seem to, it didn't seem to me that we want to be doing the comp plan and the strategic plan simultaneously. We've been through that. It's no fun. It's no fun for the staff. It's no fun for our consultants. It's no fun for anybody. So we should, my thought is, we should offset them, we, at least by half the period of the comprehensive plan?
One year?
Yeah, so a year, so that, that we balance it, so.
But every three years, but it, but.
Yeah, so a year and a half or whatever that works out to be.
That's fine.
And, and that's kind of how it's, the date works out now. You know, it said October 20, 20, for the comp plan every three years. So 2023 would be, you know, it's on a three-year cycle. Well, we're gonna be adopting a brand-new plan in 2023. So then another three years for the comp plan. We have this as 2025, so they're, they are, they would be staggering about a year the way, the way the dates are written right now.
Okay. What, what I'll do is I'll forward the language through the city manager and, and, you know, if you could forward it to Ms. Vincent and then we can go from there and then, I don't have an issue as far as.
It doesn't make sense to do both of them at the same time.
Well, they're gonna do the work. I'm not. So I mean, that's the point. So, anyway. We've got, any other comments, Vice Mayor Lunt?
No, that's it. I'm fine.
Okay, any other comments, Commissioner?
Do we need to make a motion to table until next meeting? Make a motion to table till next meeting on this first reading?
You want to do, you defer it to the next meeting?
We can do another first meeting in a week, work on that language. Then you can always tweak it. And we won't have to go a third one because you can tweak the language as it is, you know.
The next meeting is what date, the 15th, right, next week? So it would be deferring to a date certain, which would be December 15th?
Yep.
So if I could have a motion and a second to that effect.
Motion to defer ordinance number 202231 to next week, December?
December 15th.
15th?
November.
I'm sorry.
November the 15th.
I've been putting down October for November. You're absolutely right. November 15th.
November 15th.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor Lunt. Thanks.
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Culias?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticus.
All right. That ends the ordinances and resolutions. And let's go back to the special consent agenda. The next one is number 10, Code Enforcement Settlement, Eunice Drive. City Manager La Couris, or how do you?
Yes.
Yes, I'm, go ahead.
You're on the hook.
This, this is one of the ones that is, is not quite completed with the previous city attorney. And, and there was no time, then it got deferred by agenda and the hurricane that stopped the last September meeting when these people wanted an answer. So between that time, there wasn't anything done. Me and my, being frugal, I really didn't want to assign one of the temporary attorneys and incur the cost. Because I'm looking at this and, you know, being on here and listening to direction of the board in past meetings, I didn't think that this $20,000 settlement offer, based on the past ones, would be something you would consider. So I didn't want to incur any cost until I got direction for it. There's two ways I can go in your direction. I can go ahead and, and get a new attorney to draw up this agreement for $20,000 settlement and go forward. Or if I was gauging what the commission would say, I can tell this applicant that that's not going to be sufficient to make this deal. As you see on, you see on the backup I gave you, the deal's for $37,000, but they'll take away what the settlement is and just, it's a property that was bought on a tax deed by a company that has been in code enforcement mess for many, many, many years. So just on the surface of it would not have been an offer that I would have thought that you would consider to go forward with. But I'm not the one who, who makes that decision. An attorney does. But I'm, I'm taking it to try to get this over. So I can do it either way. If you give me direction, if this isn't even close in the direction, I can tell the people so they can finish their closing document. This is not there. Or if you direct me to go forward and do this settlement agreement because you want to get this off the plate as a leftover item and, and go forward with it, you can give me that direction either way and I can make the phone call either way tomorrow. But I wanted to bring it before I incurred any costs with it and get your direction.
Okay. So basically, if, if I remember the numbers right, they're about $150,000 and they want to settle for about $20,000, right? And I, I, the names sound a little familiar, so I dug up some backup back from 2010, I believe, or whatever it was. It was six lots. The code, the fine was $600 and something thousand dollars. The recommendation there was to settle for about something similar from the city attorney, different city attorney than Mr. Trask. And the commission, no, I, I take that back. The, the person who owned the property wanted to settle for about the same amount. And then the city attorney, instead of the $20,000, recommended that we settle for $150,000 of the $650,000 fine. And so that's what the commission agreed to. So that's the way it worked. And this one, it, like the last time, it was a long fine, similar issues, and, and this one's a similar one. Now, out of those six lots, the company, if it's the same one, only owned one of the six lots. This time, it's two lots owned by the company. So I, that's pretty much it. Let me go to public comments and we'll go to the commission first. Any public comments on this item? Mr. Jumper, are there any remote access comments?
I do not have anyone in attendance at this time.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to commission comments, Vice Mayor Lunt.
Now, from my observations, we have $110,000, $20,000 lien against a property that's up for sale for $40,000. What's, what's the best option for the, for the city here? I mean, from my point of view, we have two options. One is to accept the $20,000. The other one is to foreclose on this property. I'm surprised we didn't foreclose on it before because the last time it was sold, they had $115,000 against that property. So I, I guess the decision for the board here to make tonight is, is do we want to just get rid of this guy, write it off, take our $20,000 and, and hope they keep the property maintained? We all know where that property is. Or do we foreclose on this property? And, and, you know, just take our losses? I haven't really added up all the, all the fees we've spent on litigation and so forth so far, but I don't think they're $20,000 worth. I don't, I don't know which way the board is, is predisposed on this. The property's not worth enough to almost make it worth foreclosing from my, from my perspective.
For, for this evening, City Manager La Couris, what would you like to see? Either yes or no to this, to the offer?
Either bring forward that settlement, bring forward and get the documentation and lawyer involved to do the settlement to bring back to you or, or, or tell, tell the individuals that it's not close to the offer that we even accept for this thing. And, and then they can decide if the closing has been extended. I think the closing was supposed to be in September, which is why they wanted to hear it. I think it's been extended. But to let them move on with a process that's been on hold while we've been waiting.
Okay. Let's, any other comments? Let's see if any of the commissioners can come up some, Commissioner Carr?
Yeah, I think Vice Mayor Lunt makes a good point. This isn't a piece of land that's on US 19. It's not a huge piece of part, like a huge parcel where you can really leverage it. It is a 20% of the offer of the fine amount, when if you take out the interest. With me, it's, it's something that, it looks like it's been in compliance for quite some time, if I understand that correctly, city manager.
Yeah.
It, it moves the property to someone else's ownership and probably gets the property developed of some sort and on the tax rolls further for additional house in the area. So the odd thing to me, I don't really know the, the whole background, but it's like an empty lot that was overgrown. And I'm kind of like, what, how do you code enforce woods? Sometimes it's some things I have, I have a hard time to balance and try to understand. When you have a wooded lot, how do you consider that code enforcement unless there's just a substantial amount of garbage on it? So with that, I mean, $100 and something thousand is very obsessive for this piece of land. I think $20,000, which is about 20% of the fine, is a reasonable offer that we could put into potentially the Land Preservation Fund or something along those lines and get some more property on the, the city books somewhere else.
Okay. Commissioner Eisner?
I'm in disagreement to the $20,000. It's not just overgrown lot. We have nuisance prohibitions. I'm not saying that they should be paying the full amount either. There is somewhere in between that I think could be done. Or if it can't be, then go to full close on it. That's all I would do. So that's my take.
Okay. Commissioner Culias?
I, I think the offer's too low and not going to support it. And they need to come back with a, an amount that's reasonable. We've, we've taken some stances on, you know, other properties that we were firm on, and I don't think this is any different.
Okay. I, I mean, I've got some questions, for example, for clarification. And these are the sort of questions, for example, is the lien on the property or is it with the owner? If I'm not mistaken, it runs from the owner. Is that something that you could, as far as a lien goes?
I can't, I don't know.
Because even if.
I believe it stays with the property and then gets transferred to the next owner.
It stays with the property, so if it's $100,000 and the property's worth $40,000, then it isn't going to work?
Right.
Okay. And that's basically, gets back to your scenario, you know?
I'm going, okay, so to continue the conversation. We foreclose on this property. We get a $42,000, I think that's what its current sale price is anyway, dollar piece of property that we'd have to decide to do something with. Probably not in an area where we want to put Habitat for Humanity or something like that. It's right next to the last piece of property that tried to, I think, get part of Calumet Drive given to them and stuff like that. I mean, it's likely that that developer might want to buy this just so he gets a whole long section there and, and does what he was trying to do in the first place. So that would be my strategy, is if we're going to foreclose, sell it back to the developer next door because he needs it. Or we could just negate all this stuff, but it doesn't sound like, I don't like doing this kind of stuff where.
I agree.
People scoff laws for years and years and years and then, and then, you know, say, I want to get out of here for, you know, pennies on the dollar. I mean, even to the point that one of them had the total amount in escrow and we still gave half of it away. I'm, I'm tired of this stuff. It's not going to have any teeth until we start putting teeth into it.
Okay. You know, we could go ahead, Commissioner Carr?
Yeah, I just, a couple of things I want to bring up here. So my understanding is the current owner wasn't the one that actually had the, and the city manager, correct me if I'm wrong, was a nuisance of the property, I'm understanding.
Bought it at a tax deed for $20,000 with, Jeff, they've had over $100,000, I think at the time he bought it. And they just got it as a, at a tax deed to figure out how they're going to get the $100,000 fine down afterwards. But I think they've had some things after that, Jeff, in your timeline?
From 2013, 18, 20, and 21.
Yeah.
Can you elaborate that? What is that, that you're referring to?
In the, Sergeant Miller went through and I believe it's in the backup that you have.
Right.
And it's additional case violations and stuff they went through. There was no violations in 2013, 2018 due to the maintenance, maintenance of private property. Those were in addition to the original one.
So they do have ones in addition to the original fines?
Okay. But were those addressed?
I do believe everything's in compliance at this time. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be moving forward for a settlement.
Okay. Yeah, so I mean, I just want to bring up a couple of things. So there were like, for instance, when there's two or three that came up where a family member passed away and it was, the rest of the family was trying to figure out what to do with it, and those were basically reduced to $1,000. Again, that's a piece of property was substantially like, and nuisance and a bad, a bad place with a significant amount of liens. And the board basically forgave it all, down to about $1,000. So there were some change of ownership here. Obviously, I don't know how this land can be developed or anything along those lines. But to me, $20,000, if you want to say we need more than that, I would say, tell the board, let's be specific. But from, from my stance, I think $20,000 is good. 20% of the offer currently, it's built up. And that, I just want to bring up that what we've done in the past with this current board, how we reduced it to about $1,000 on a couple of other ones. It's precarious. I, I don't like being in this situation also.
I understand, I understand. Commissioner Eisner?
I think you're comparing apples to oranges. When you have a hardship, there could be concessions. This is not that. And, and I just think it's, right now, it's too low of a bid. If, if it has a worth of $40,000, then we should take that and sell it for $40,000. I just think that's way too low for, the, I hate getting into reducing fines, even though we'll have to possibly on this, because it removes the deterrent and the compliance from the get-go. You'll sit here and listen to code enforcement and they tell you it's repeat offenders, $200 a day. What does that mean? It means nothing. Because that's, it's what are you going to collect on it? And I think we should be able to at least collect its worth. That's where I'm, you know, that's where I'm at.
Do you have any other thoughts, Vice Mayor Lunt?
I have a, more of a legal question. I buy a property at a tax sale. How do I avoid the fact that it's got a $115,000 lien on it when I buy that property? Does it, is it not evident to me?
I don't practice real estate law, so I can't.
I don't, I don't have the answer to that one.
I, I would think it's, you know, from my knowledge of property law, I would think, you know, the risk is there. So this person who bought it at a tax sale knew that there was a substantial lien on this property, just took the risk. Obviously, had some time with the property where they weren't taking care of it because they had other citations after that fact. So I'm, I'm tending to agree with Ms., with Commissioner Eisner here, that, that we just ought to move forward and foreclose.
Okay, what, so we can kind of cut to the chase. I'd like to have a motion. Hang on a second. Commissioner Culias?
I just wanted to add, you know, my feelings about code enforcement cases, that we just look at them case by case. There's a lot of different multifaceted variables that come with each case. And, you know, when they get presented is when we discuss them. And regarding that property, I mean, if you've ever driven down Bay Shore, that, that whole side has been overgrown for decades. So why this one property, I don't know, not saying single doubt, but that whole side's been actually looked like a marsh, a marshland and, and overgrown area. So, you know, I don't want to settle for a small amount on, on this case particularly. And, you know, I'm just hoping the board can go that direction as well.
I'm just, based on what I'm hearing, 20,000 isn't enough. So do we want to give the city manager a number? It looks like the contract sales were 40. That's, I think, the city manager's asking for some type of direction here for this. So I mean, I would venture saves, 25,000, that's 25%. Is that enough or not enough? That's, I think, what the city manager's asking for, right?
If they make a settlement of.
Yeah, I, I mean, you're asking, I don't know.
Yeah, so I mean, I would, I mean, I would make a motion that we give the city manager direction to come back with an offer at $27,000. It's more than, at the 20, it seems like the board wants more than 20, but the property value is purchased at 40,000.
Okay, so.
And it's, it's money that the city doesn't have today, that they'd be able to.
Your motion is recommend, to deny the, the offer and to request a settlement of 27,000?
Yeah.
Okay. That's the motion. Is there a second? Okay. That motion dies for lack of a second. And is there someone else that wishes to make a, a motion and then a second? Or Commissioner Carr, do you have another motion?
I would defer to the board on this one, so.
I'd like to make a motion that we get another offer. And I don't like negotiating with myself. And I've said this before and I'll say it again. Let the person who wants to buy it, whoever that is, make an offer and we decide yes or no. It's, I don't want to be up here playing let's make a deal.
Okay, so the, the motion would just simply be to deny the offer?
Correct.
And the city manager?
I think the motion would be to direct the city manager to negotiate with one of our attorneys another offer to bring to the board.
Right, but there's a standing offer right now of 20,000, right?
They never wrote, it was never written up, but I can tell them the 20,000 isn't enough.
So we have to deny the, this offer, correct?
So, so the motion would be to direct the city manager to negotiate an offer higher than 20,000, is that correct?
Yeah.
That's fine. Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Second, second roll call.
Commissioner Culias?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt? Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticus?
Yes.
We, we struggle with these liens and reduce fines and stuff.
And what, what's on the list, when we get new code enforcement people, we get a new city attorney, and remember, the new city attorney is going to have a lot of things to get done with, so it's not going to be right away. But that we bring all this back, look at code enforcement, look at, you know, look at, look at some of the criteria that Commissioner Coolio has talked about, about circumstances and review, and just get a consistent board, attorney, police, everybody in line of set some, set what the objectives of code, what we're looking for, and, and get it more consistent. We've got to do that, but we've got to get a settled city attorney and settled code enforcement person which is going to be coming on board, and have workshop and sit here and hash all this out, so we were all in line of where we're going to go, and then the people knowing their offer don't try to, you know, bring an offer on something like this low. You need to come with a standard, so that is on the list, down the line, that we need to all get together and do.
Agreed, agreed. Okay, so we're done with that, the next agenda item is appointment to the Heritage Preservation Board. Ms. Menusus, would you like to do this, or do you want me to, let me go ahead and take...
Howard, you want to do it?
You want to do it, go ahead.
No, that's fine. So there's an opening on the Heritage Preservation Board due to the resignation of Ms. Cornell. There's two applicants, Jean Denoff and Jennifer Bracy. The first choice for Ms. Denoff is Heritage Preservation, and Ms. Bracy's choice is third. So you have two options, you can, there is a current alternate, Rita Kaplan, she was appointed for twenty-six of twenty-two. She can be moved up, and then you would just need to appoint one of the two to that vacant spot, or you can leave Ms. Kaplan as the alternate and appoint, and appoint either Ms. Denoff or Ms. Bracy as a regular member.
Thank you. Let me ask if there's any public comments. Mr. Jump, is there any remote access comments?
And we do not have anyone in attendance at this time.
Okay, Vice Mayor Lunt, let's start with you.
My opinion is to appoint Jean Denoff to fill the vacated seat of, of Pat Cornell.
Okay, Commissioner Carr?
No, mine would be to move the alternate Rita Kaplan to the regular seat, and then have one of the other two fill the position, Ms. Bracy, as alternate.
Okay. Commissioner Eisner?
I would put Jean Denoff.
As the alternate?
No, no, as the main, on the board.
And leave Mrs. Kaplan at the...
Correct.
Okay. Commissioner Coolios?
I would move to appoint Jean Denoff as a regular member.
Let's have a motion and a second then.
Motion to move Jean Denoff as a regular and to leave Rita Kaplan as a alternate.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there comments, Mayor?
I'm sorry?
Is there comments?
Would you like to make a comment?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. So, before I was, before the new board was in place, this is, we, we've talked about this, there was public comment about, I think multiple, multiple of you made public comments as well, too, about not skipping over the alternate and giving the alternate a chance to come onto the board. So, I just wanted to bring this up, I think this is like the fourth time this has happened, where you've passed over the alternate who sat on the board and put someone else who hasn't been on the board before in the past. So, I understand from time to time, that's something that can be done, it's on our powers, or our powers are, as a board, we can do that. I think it's not good visibility to continue to do that to the volunteer board members who've sit on these boards. That's my comment in this situation, thank you.
Thank you. So we have a, a motion and a second, and roll call, please.
Could I make a comment back?
Yes.
The prior boards have done this before, I sat on the Board of Adjustment, and they put people in. Commissioner Carr was responsible for that as well, so what he's saying now is different to what has been done in the past. And you have Jean Denoff who's gone through the Citizens Academy, and Rita Kaplan has been in there, yes, but she's been in there a very, very short time. So if I have to choose between two people, someone who's gone through a Citizens Academy versus going through, you know, just having one or two meetings is a big difference. It's not like we're just nilly-willy, just picking people out of the sky. So I, I don't want to have that impression, there was thought that went into this. It's not just the way it's been presented by Commissioner Carr.
I understand, are there any other Commissioner comments?
I also did the same research as far as tenure and who showed up, and...
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Coolios?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
No.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticus?
Yes. Okay, the next one is the appointment to the Planning and Zoning Board, Ms. Menusus, please.
Okay. So this one is to replace the current alternate, which was George Andrew Otis, who resigned. Also, there are terms for Ms. Vigil and Mr. Vessi that have expired. Both were contacted and both would like to be considered for reappointment. So the board can reappoint Ms. Vigil and Mr. Vessi to another term, and that term would expire October one, two thousand twenty-five, and then appoint, and appoint someone from the list below to fill that alternate spot.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to public comments, are there any public comments on this item? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
And we do not have anyone in attendance at this time.
Okay, let's go to the Commission, Vice Mayor Lunt.
So I, I think we should go ahead and reappoint Melissa and Justin, that's, that's kind of a no-brainer. And looking through records of qualifications, my consideration was Robert Rockland to fill the unexpired term of the alternate member seat.
Okay. Commissioner Carr?
I would also reappoint the two individuals, Mrs. Vessi, I'm sorry, Mr. Vessi and Mrs. Vigil. And then, obviously, we've got a lot of applications here that are, I think, quality applications. This one, I would go with Darla Gross.
Darla Gross?
Early, she's got two different names.
Okay, Gross, okay. Commissioner Eisner?
I want to move ahead with Justin Vessi. I would like to make Robert Rockland a permanent and Darla Gross an alternate.
Okay. Commissioner Coolios?
I would like to reappoint Justin Vessi to another term. I'd like to add Robert Rockland to take over the one seat as well, and then put, let's see. Commissioner Eisner, what was that name you said?
Darla Gross.
Gross as the alternate. I, I seen Ms. Vigil's missed some, some attendance recently, and it's been steady, and so, I'm looking to bring some people on who can make some good decisions and, and being able to articulate. And Mr. Rockline did email this board, and I did appreciate that board with his experiences and his pitch, so I'd, I'd like to move him to a permanent position.
Okay, so for clarification, you're saying reappoint Robert Rockland and Justin Vessi to a term that would expire twenty twenty-five, and Ms. Darla Gross to fill the unexpired term of the alternate that would expire in October two thousand twenty-three, is that what you were saying?
Yes, sir.
And, and Mr. Eisner, or, I'm sorry, Commissioner Eisner, is that the same?
I answered to either one, don't worry. I said I answered to either one, Mr. Eisner, Commissioner Eisner, doesn't matter.
Okay, well, you know what I mean.
I do.
All right, but let's, let's have a motion in a second, that's the only way this is going to get fleshed out.
Motion, Melissa Vigil and Justin Vessi to be reappointed to another term and appoint Darla Gross as an alternate member.
Okay, is there a second to that?
That wasn't his, did you change your decision?
What was the motion, could you repeat it, please?
To reappoint Melissa and Justin to another term and to appoint Darla Gross as the alternate.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, that, that motion dies for lack of a second, is there...
Point Melissa, Melissa and Justin to another term and appoint Robert, I'm sorry, Robert, I don't know how to say her last name. Rocken, Robert Rockland, to fill the alternate unexpired term.
Is there a second to that? Okay, that fails for lack of a second.
I'm going to reappoint Justin Vessi, I want to put Robert Rockland in and Darla Gross as an alternate.
Second.
Darla Gross for the alternate?
As an alternate, sorry.
Okay, and there's a second, so we have a motion and a second, any other comments?
Like I said, I do want to reiterate that Mr. Rockland sent in a nice email, and maybe that should be consideration for other applicants in the future to, on other boards, that they'd wish to maybe send in an email to all of us, I think it was effective, so, thank you.
Mayor, can I ask, I want to put something in also. You know, one of the things that I, I spoke about also was that we're not getting, when we're reappointing somebody, we're not getting their resume, their application, yet we're trying to compare them to the new applications, and each time, I, I go after them, but we should have those to do the comparison, you know? Not only how long they've been an alternate, but at the same time, attendance. I mean, because you could be an alternate and not be there, and, and, you know, it's just, you're making a very poor comparison. So I did bring that up, and I'd like to see that in the future so that we have a good comparison to make that decision.
I concur, as the city grows, the boards are becoming more important to us, and we, we need to get a full picture.
Okay, so saying...
Sure, I, I agree with that.
Ms. Menusus, could you share that with Ms. Jacobs?
Yes.
Okay, I, I think that's, you've got three people saying the same thing. So let's, a roll call, please.
Commissioner Coolios?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
No.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticus?
Yes. All right. The Public Art Committee, appointment to the Public Art Committee, that's item thirteen, Ms. Menusus, please.
So the Public Art Committee, we have the resignation of Lucy Ann Robinson, who was a regular member. Additionally, the terms for Mr. Jones and Mr. Mills have expired. Mr. Jones would like to serve another term, but Mr. Mills is not seeking another term. So, the board, to make it easier, if you wish to reappoint Graham Jones, would be item one, and then you would have to go to item two to fill the term of Lucy Ann Robinson and Mr. Mills. So you would have to do one and two, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Are there any public comments on this one? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
And we do not have anyone in attendance at this time.
Okay. Let's go to the Commission, Vice Mayor Lunt.
Okay, so, if I understand this, I want to reappoint Graham Jones to another three-year term. For two, I'd like to appoint, or I'd like to look at, moving Alani Christopoulos to fill the unexpired term of Lucy Ann Robinson, and looking at Nicholas Toth to fill the unexpired term of William Mills.
Okay.
And you need an alternate, too, no? Don't you need an alternate also?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, now you'll have to appoint two alternates.
And then picking, who are we, I got this right here?
But you moved the two alternates up.
Oh, my.
Picking Angela Seaton's as alternate one and Dawn Abrilello, if I'm, sorry if I'm making your name bad, as alternate two.
Okay. Ms. Menusus, you got that one?
I got it.
Okay. Commissioner Carr?
Yeah, mine's the same, except for Angela, I would put Sherri Orr instead of Angela, and then Dawn also as alternate.
Okay. Commissioner Eisner?
Mine is equivalent to what Vice Mayor said.
Vice Mayor Lunt, okay.
Just for convenience, I don't want to have to repeat all the names, I can if you need, but I, I won't.
Commissioner Coolios?
I agree with Vice Mayor Lunt.
Okay, let's have a motion and a second.
Do you want us to repeat it, or just say, I motioned to what Vice Mayor Lunt said? Appoint Graham Jones to another three-year term, move Alani and Nicholas to the unexpired term, or, I'm sorry, the expired terms of each Lucy Ann Robinson and William Mills, appoint Angela as alternate one and Dawn as alternate two for the vacancies.
Second.
You don't have to think about it, second. All right, well, let's, the night, the night is getting late, it's a full moon, so let's have roll call, please.
It's always a full moon.
Commissioner Coolios?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticus?
Yes. Okay, one more appointment to the Sustainability Committee, Ms. Menusus.
So, Dr. Robinson has resigned and his term also expired. Dory Larson's term has expired, and she has expressed to serve another term, and she is eligible for reappointment. So your option is one and two, if you wish to move Dory Larson to another term, and then you can move the alternate up to fill Dr. Robinson's spot, either one of the alternates, or you can appoint directly from the list.
Okay. Public comments. Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
And we do not have anyone in attendance at this time.
All right, let's go to Vice Mayor Lunt.
So my direction would be to reappoint Dory Larson to another term, and to appoint B. Carol Mickett to the expired term of Paul Robinson, and then to select an alternate to replace Carol Mickett with Jennifer Bracy.
Okay. Commissioner Carr?
Yeah, thanks. Mine would be to reappoint Dory Larson to another term, move Robin Sanger, and then appoint Jennifer Bracy as a alternate.
So instead of, the same as Vice Mayor Lunt, except Carol Mickett, it would be Robin Sanger?
Right, yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Eisner?
Yeah, this is going to be cute here. Dory Larson, reappoint, move B. to vacancy, so I'm right now equivalent to what Vice Mayor said, but on the last, I am at, I believe the name is Chauvin?
Shoban.
Chauvin?
Shoban, okay. All right, so that's, that's third variation, Commissioner Coolios?
There'll be a fourth.
I'm going to go to reappoint Dory Larson to...
I'm going to go to reappoint Dory Larson to another term, appoint Carol Mickett to fill the unexpired term, Dr. Paul Robinson, and move Jennifer Bracy to fill the alternate number two.
Okay.
Mayor, can I make a motion? Make a motion to reappoint Dory Larson to another term, appoint Carol Mickett to replace and fill the Paul Rob, Dr. Paul Robinson's expired term, and appoint her to a full term, and then appoint Jennifer Bracy to replace an alternate number two.
Okay, is there a second on that? Second?
Second.
Vice Mayor Lunt, okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticus.
Yes, okay. I think that ends the agenda, is that correct? For the regular session, so let's adjourn at ten fourteen, and then call to order, or does anybody need a break?
Get to it.
Okay, let's call to order the Community Redevelopment Agency for the downtown Tarpon Springs redevelopment area on Tuesday, November eighth, twenty twenty-two, at ten fourteen PM. Okay. Roll call, please.
Chair Vaticus. Chair Vaticus, okay. Vice Chair Lunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Here.
Commissioner Eisner?
Here.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Here.
Okay, item one, authorization to proceed with final design and bidding of jitney displaying garage. City Manager Lacorice.
Yes, what we're doing is looking for the authorization to proceed with a final design, this has been going on for a while, as Mr. Robinson would tell you in his presentation, we're finally to the point where we have an idea on the costs, so, Bob, if you'll give the presentation of briefly how we got where we are and what the decision for tonight is.
Sure, so I'm Bob Robertson, Project Administration Department Director, and to briefly summarize the project, the jitney displaying garage concept is a freestanding glass-walled display and storage building that would be used for the historic jitney vehicle, it would be located on Court Street, located directly behind the train depot. Ed Hoffman, who is here tonight, has donated, donated his architectural services, but final engineering design elements remain to be completed before we can put the project out to bid for construction. So, that design concept is presented in your backup, there's some renderings that we, that Mr. Hoffman prepared, those have been presented to and approved by the Heritage Preservation Board, that was back in May. So, looking, looking ahead here, the current estimate to complete the design and construct the building is about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's with a big caveat, the caveat being the final construction price will depend on the bidding process, and we, we know what that's been like in recent months. And as, as with all construction contracts of this magnitude, the final award of the construction contract will come back to the CRA board for approval, so you will see that, we're not going to just put it out to, and then start the construction right away. And finally, funding would be provided through the CRA budget, so if you want me to elaborate any more on the cost, Mark, I can do that.
Just the, again, the budgeted and what would have to be added to the budget, it was a hundred thousand dollars that was budgeted, so in essence, you'd have to add fifty thousand dollars of the CRA fund to complete that, that is not, it's there in the CRA, but it's not been designated, so.
Right.
This is, and again, depending on, could be higher, I don't think it's going to be lower with the costs we've seen in bidding and stuff, so understand, after we spend the forty thousand for design, we're hoping, you know, you would hope that it'd meet the estimate and stuff, but there's no guarantee that it could be a little bit higher than that estimate. So, that's the same before you spend the forty thousand dollars on engineering, we got to decide if we're adding, you know, at least an additional fifty thousand to what was already budgeted in the CRA, and just realize when that comes in, it, you know, there may be, may be an increase, hopefully it won't be.
Okay, is that it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Hoffman's here to answer any questions, is that correct?
That's up to you and him, but.
Let me go to public comments, are there any public comments on this item?
Anita Protus, nine oh one Bay Shore Drive. This project has been a long time in the making. When it was donated to the city and we went down and pulled it out of the garage, I think you were there, Mayor, or maybe mistaken on that, it's been so long ago, we saw the condition it was in, and we had to talk with the Historical Society about taking it and restoring it, and we had a committee, and we went to the public, and they were very happy that we had another jitney. That was very important transportation years ago in Tarpon Springs, not only was it for the Greek community, it was for the community wide. People would ride on it, we didn't have buses back then, to go to the grocery store, to go back and forth from Greek town, uptown, to the doctor's office, to the hospital, back and forth. And they were very, they were loved by everyone. I think it's the last one and the only one now in the state of Florida, Miami lost all of theirs, the Cubans saw what we had here in Tarpon Springs, when they came with sponges, they went back and started their little jitney bus business in Miami. They've all been destroyed, who knows what's happened to them, so we're fortunate to have one, and citizens in Tarpon Springs donated to restore it, and we use it now still sometimes when, in parades, I think that we've used it in the Christmas parade, or when dignitaries come to Tarpon. But it is unique, and it is something that we should be very proud of, and it's something else for the visitors to come and see in Tarpon Springs. I think most of you know the history of it, and the late Dudley, Dr. Dudley Sally, who was a commissioner, became president of the Historical Society and worked with the city manager and the city commission back then to have something built to, to store it in, the city's been very kind, letting us leave it here within the city to keep it secure, and everybody wants to see it, people want to ride in it. And it's really very unique for our community, so I hope you support it tonight and follow through with it, because it will be a very great asset to this community, thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
And we do not have anyone in attendance at this time.
Okay, let me just start out briefly, Mr. Hoffman, I want to thank you for all your time that you put into this project, and I know you, you voluntarily, or you provided that at no cost, so I very much appreciate that. Let's start with Vice Mayor Lunt.
Yeah, I would actually like to thank Eddie as well for all the time he's put in, both for this historical agency and, and for his design. I want to thank Anita as well, because one of the things I've always been lacking on this was a historical perspective of why do we have a jitney and why do we need a garage to put it in? And so I, I wasn't here, I guess, when we went through the original acquisition and, and so forth and so on, and I, I had missed the part about how involved the community was at the time with this, so. I don't really have any, too many questions. One of the things that concerns me is the fact that the costs have gone from what was proposed at a hundred to a hundred and fifty, and the way things are going these days could, could easily be two hundred, and how that impacts our CRA budget, and the plans we have for the CRA. And that's, that's probably my only, do we have money in the CRA for this?
Yes, there's money available for it, yes.
There's money available for it, does it impact anything else that we had planned to do with the CRA budget?
I don't know of anything, we've got, you know, we've got money available for, for projects that are not designated, that's one of the things the board will get into after we get finished with a lot of the things we're doing, getting ready for election, to look at where some of the money can be spent in the CRA, especially now that we've got some manpower to provide in the budget that we can actually do some things, so.
Okay.
There is money available.
And, but this extra hundred thousand dollars would obviously mean we have to not do something else. I don't know, it's, I'm only one of five, I, I think I like the project, I'm not happy with the cost, and I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Carr?
Yeah, I think this is a great project, so, just to give you a little history, if I could elaborate a little bit more on the budget of the CRA, so there's a hundred thousand already budgeted from last year in the CRA for this project, and there's a significant amount of money unfunded in the CRA, so there's a lot of money that's there. The board, the city manager, hasn't brought anything forward to say, let's go ahead and do this project, I've been a proponent for trying to do a parking garage with CRA funds, so we've been able to put a little away each, each year, but there's really not a project there for that, so there's a lot of money in the CRA funds, it's just sitting there, waiting to be used. In this area, this is a great, a great asset for the city to put on display within the CRA, the jitney, and I think Mr. Hoffman's designs fit the neighborhood very well, you've got the bike trail where people are going by on the bike trail, you've got a lot of pedestrian traffic here, most of this is all glass, so you can see it from all sides, it fits the neighborhood well, it's a nice asset, brick and mortar to the CRA itself. I think it, it enhances the CRA from a beautification standpoint, I wouldn't call it art necessarily, but that's basically what the jitney is almost, it's almost like a statue, and it's either a display area to be, to be kept safe, so, Mr. Hoffman, if you could, can I ask Mr. Hoffman a question now?
Of course.
Okay, you're the president of the Historical Society, I think, right? Is that correct?
Yes, I am the president, I'm Ed Hoffman, Hoffman Architects, yes, I'm the president of the Historical Society, which is also the main reason I'm donating all my services, because I don't want any appearance of any conflict of interest.
Sure, the Historical Society, are, are they in favor of, as a whole, to display the jitney in a public setting?
Absolutely, this, this is a project where it's really, the jitney is, to a certain degree, is one of our major exhibits in the museum. The wonderful thing about this, by being outside and well-protected, is that it becomes a twenty-four seven, all year round exhibit that's exposed to the public, you know, we only, our, the depot is only open a certain number of hours, you know, based on all our volunteers work there, so this one, this one becomes an exhibit that's exposed all, all the time. I think, you know, in terms of the, Anita was talking about the importance of the jitney historically, which is absolutely, you know, true, and that it's the connecting the, the Greek town, I guess they call it, the, you know, the sponge dock area with the downtown, that was, it was a wonderful thing used by both the Greek community as well as the non-Greeks, but, so that's, that's really important, but if you look at it just from the CRA point of view, what is there to do in, in town, you know, and this, again, gets to be twenty-four hour, well, they have this great display of the jitney, it's nineteen twenty-seven, there, you'd be amazed how many people, particularly older people, are so excited about this, this old, this old car, I mean, they're interested in antique automobiles anyway. So it becomes a real attraction, that's not open from five to, you know, or, you know, eight o'clock in the morning until five, it's open twenty-four seven, so, so if you go to Tula's across the street, you know, then you go across and look at the jitney, it's just constantly exposed, so we're, you know, we're excited about that. It also is serving the purpose, right now is, is in the city garage, which we've been just so grateful to the city for, you know, giving us that, allowing the jitney to be housed there, but the conditions aren't quite what they, we would like them to be in terms of, you know, having dehumanification, and mostly accessibility, to be able to, because y'all aren't there on, on the weekends, the city isn't there, so, I mean, they have granted us, you know, we're able to get, get it out sometimes, but it's just, but having it there behind the museum would just make it so much more accessible, because we'd really like it not only to be on display there, but we'd like to get it out for the Christmas parade, all the city events, and that kind of a thing, so, I think that's a, a real direct benefit to the merchants downtown to activate, it's one of the most activating thing that the city has, I mean, you know, some people come to look at, you know, the city for the clock, yeah, maybe, but they'll also want to come and see this nineteen twenty-seven Chevrolet, that was such an important part of the, you know, our history. So, that's, that's why I think it's, it's good for, I mean, to me, it's apple pie, it's, it's a win or baklava, it's, you know, it's, it's a happy thing for everybody, everybody in the community, I can't imagine why you would not want us to do this, and I think it will pay back in terms of bringing tourists, more tourists into town. We're also going to, it's also kind of a shop where I'm, I'm foreseeing a lot of people that are, you know, in fact, I've talked to several that, that really want to be involved in the, in the maintenance of, of the jitney, and, and it's almost like a, you know, club of guys that can come in and pull it out and wash it and wax it, take good care of it, keep things fixed, replace a clutch, whatever that they want to do with it, they can also clean the windows of, you know, the glass, and just kind of take care of the whole thing, and, you know, every other Saturday morning, or whatever, but I see that as another aspect of it, that, that will be so much more healthy for the, for the jitney itself and the preservation of it, as well as the facility that it'll be housed in.
Thank you for the details on that, and, and there would be some type of monument sign out, out by it just to describe what it is, what the jitney is, why, like why it's here?
Yeah, there's a plaque there that, it writes on the car now, whether we take that, and, but we want to recognize the donors, but then we also want to talk, you know, give the history, and that's, and one of the renderings there, there's a panel there that, so you can look at the car itself, it'll be lit, and then you can read the history of, of the car, and so it'll be kind of a self-guided tour, so to speak.
So at night, there would be lights hitting the car, so if you're?
Yes, yeah, we want it to light up at night, we also have the security, the city's been great with a, a lot of new cameras around the, around the depot, and that'll be, of course, one of the focus, so that'll also help for security as well as the lighting.
Thank you for a little more details on that, appreciate it. On my side, I, I think this is a great opportunity to, to invest in the CRA with the CRA funds for this project, thank you.
Yeah, I can talk a little bit more about, to enhance what Bob was saying about the, the budget. The absolute, he's absolutely correct, that right now in this, in, you know, with, with the hurricane, what's going on down south, the availability of materials, supply chain issues, blah, 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 it's real hard, you know, we put together some numbers for this, we had missed one of the, we more recently got the numbers for the mechanical air conditioning, I should say, the mechanical and the electrical price that we think is realistic, and that is offset by one of the numbers that we had in there, that was forty percent, the labor markup, and that was on a, on one of the, all the glass, which the glass price already included labor, so it really kind of evens out, so it came out to about around a hundred and four thousand dollars for the building itself, and then we have another, and again, this is, what we're asking for is not, for all this money right now, we're, it's going to bid, we'll see what happens, hopefully it's going to be, you know, much lower, but, but we'll, we'll see, and then we can say, yeah, it's a great idea, let's move forward, or no, that's, it's, you know. So, we're acting right now, the big piece is all done, except the main thing we're asking for, I think, is, is the civil engineering, to, because we have the water coming down the, the gutter along the, you know, the granite curb of the, of Court Street, and currently it goes in between the two parking spaces, there's a flume that runs through there, so we're having to take the water and get the water around the building so it doesn't just shoot into it, and so, so that's the, I guess that's one of the prices that, you know, I'm not involved in, that's, the city engineer is the one that's calling the, the numbers on that. The fees that we have added from kind of my side of it is, you know, the direct expenses for the structural engineer and the electrical mechanical engineers, all of which is, you know, less than five thousand. all of which is, you know, less than five thousand dollars for this first phase. So you can add whatever, so if that, if that helps you with, with, with cost. So I'm hoping it's going to be, that, that a, a big part of it is that civil engineering piece of it. And maybe Costa, with his experience, can talk more to that, but. So, but the billing should be considerably less.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Eisner.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a long conversation with Ed earlier. This is not only a hundred fifty thousand dollar project, it is a lifetime maintenance. It's estimated between fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars a year. I did do some investigation into it. The jitney was so well-loved, it was left for sixty years to just sit and rot. And then it was fixed at the rate of, I believe it was around forty thousand dollars by a few of the people that are here. But the people that are contributing into this CRA fund are not here. And that's the money we would be authorizing to spend for something that we don't know whether they would want this or not. And that doesn't sit pretty with me. I looked up to see how many years it would take if we were to rent a location that's air-conditioned for this vehicle. And we could, at, just at the build amount, it's thirty-one years, we can keep this thing preserved. We don't have anybody who's volunteering to maintain it, we have no place to put any of the special. I spoke to somebody who said, there's a special lubricant grease gun that you have to use on this. It's forever breaking down, I don't see anybody here that's willing to, as, as Ed said, and believe me, Ed, I'm, I know you know, we spoke, and I appreciate all the hard work you went and put into this, but I don't see those people sitting here with a rah rah that we're going to take care of this on those Saturdays that you are speaking about. I believe that if I had those people in front, I would be a little bit more inclined to, to at least try to agree with this. I am a firm believer that we should not be doing anything, that we don't have the money, that we become a slave to this product for umpteen years. At the same time, we have no report that says that this is going to bring people to see this. I, I've seen the vehicle, for the most part, most of the parades that we have, we don't use it. I know that there was a couple of people, for a while it was being used, and then there was issues. We couldn't use it to go move things around, there was insurance issues that were coming about. Because I did do some, after I spoke with you, I did do some delving into this. And to me, it's, it's the start of another money pit, that we do very well here in the city. We buy things, and then we're stuck passing that maintenance on to everyone else after it. Because it's a glass, it has to be hurricane-proof and everything, and that's, that's the most expensive thing. We very rarely have somebody who even opens up the, the depot. And so who's going to open this up? Who's going to come in there? I, I don't see a list of, okay, I'll, I'll let you speak in a minute. I don't see a list of people that you have coming in and saying that for ten, you know, ten people are volunteering to on Saturday, come and wax this and do this. This is going to be another job that the city takes over. And I, I would like to get a consensus of the people that have put money into this, because I, I tend to agree with Commissioner Carr with his comment when he said, we could take this CRA fund and utilize it to build a parking garage, which is so much more needed. This to me, I, I know the people, I already investigated, who invested in the forty thousand dollars to, you know, retrofit and fix this thing up. And it's a beautiful thing, I've seen it. We had this in front of the Civic Center a couple of times when we had that, that, that dedication of a plaque. But we don't have drivers, we have no issue, you know, it, it would just be another thing that we need to take care of that can actually be placed in a garage and be just as well taken care of. You know, if it was such an amazing thing, why did we leave this to, you know, just rot for sixty years? You know, it, it's interesting to paint this pretty picture of it now, because private investors put forty thousand into it. But those same private investors should be putting the, the storage as well. Why is the CRA funds, the people that run businesses, if, if they came before me and, or anybody came before me and handed me fifty, sixty signatures that this is a fantastic project, I'm in. I just don't want to go spending two hundred thousand dollars, be locked into two hundred, you know, two thousand dollars a year to air-condition it. And, you know, who's, nobody's volunteered to go clean the windows on Saturday. I mean, you know, all these things, and, and I appreciate it, it was a, a pretty painted picture of what it could be. But I can't go on that, I have to go on, I'm a realist. And this is just another project that we would be taking on and be responsible for. So in my opinion, unless I see a, a group of people that have been paying into this, that want this done. What if you don't eat at Tula's, then you don't get to see it, I mean, you know, it, it's, it's not something that I think we should be spending CRA funds on. I still want to spend CRA funds on our Christmas lights and use what we've been spending on the Christmas lights for something else. We have so many projects that are pertinent to keeping this city running, this is not one of them. This is, this is a, a self-interest type project, and, and that's, that's my take, so. Thank you.
Commissioner Kulyas.
Yeah, I, I'm all about restoring and bringing back the history in Tarpon Springs, and, and I know that the jitney brings a, a lot of memories to the people who grew up here. I just wanted to ask Mr. Hoffman and those from the Historical Society, do you think the location and where you want to build it is the best optimal one for people to come by and see it? Because, you know, I, I, I want to, I just think it, it might take away some, the ability to have some, you know, I see sometimes there's events where the back part of the train depot is used to stage or, you know, for bands or other stuff. And I think it might take away from the ability to have some events right there, but just wanted to see, did you guys try to explore any other areas in town to, to put it, and just your thoughts on it?
Yes, and I can also then come back to Mr.
Sure, sure.
Commissioner Eisner's point, but yes, that's, first thing is, okay, it's a one-way street on that side, and, and it'll be behind, behind the building. But the amount of traffic that goes through there is actually pretty high, and particularly the trail. So everybody that drives it goes on the trail, then it's an easy pop-off and it becomes a visiting kind of a thing. We looked at the Safford House location, but talk about visibility, and we're looking for properties that the city already owns or, you know, so we're not going out and buying a piece of property, because that, that would really shoot the budget too for, for a piece of downtown. So, so that seemed to be the most logical place. The other thing is that it combines it with the museum, because it is a piece of our collection. So, so that, it, it seemed to make sense that the two work together. I know that, I'm trying to think of Eddie's last name. But, you know, from across where he, you know, there have been some, some events there on the back porch, you know, where they, they stage on the back porch and out. But we've also had events that Florida National, Florida Trust for Historic Preservation had their annual meeting here for Florida. One year, and they, they closed Safford, and they used the, the deck on the side for the band and all, so. So they can still work out as a, as a big event down in that area, you know, that's, that's a possibility.
That's a good point you bring up, and that would look right, that jitney would look real good next to the Safford House, right on the former property, the former Hoffman property. But I'm for it, you know, I know it brings back, I'm all about bringing up the history again, and, and, you know, I want people to come by and then say, hey, that's what people were driving around in, in the twenties and thirties to get to and from places, so I, I know it's an expensive budget, and I, I do have some of the concerns that Commissioner Eisner has with upkeeping. But I think this is a treasure in knowing that, oh, one of the last ones around. And so right next to that, that depot does make sense, but you guys bringing up the facts that it can be moved around, being brought out and placed in certain areas, you know, during maybe a day or two of certain events by other buildings and stuff is, is something I like. And so, you know, I'm going to go forward with, I'd like to approve and see it worked on and move forward.
Can I add one more point to that in terms of its location? The, the city has a substantial parking lot back there now, and that's really an active parking lot. And so you have a lot of traffic through there as well, so it's like you've got a place to park, look at the jitney if you're driving, if you're not on a bike. But when you mentioned the upkeep cost, much of what Mr. Eisner, Commissioner Eisner had talked about was, you know, that this is going to be, you know, this, this noose around the city's neck for years, you know, and, but the, but I can tell you, the jitney is not a city property. It's the Historical Society property, and it has been maintained and taken care of by the city, not over, by the Historical, not for the last sixty years, Anita can talk to you about that. But when we did get it, we've had it in great shape and in keeping it, keeping it so as much as it can be in an unconditioned space and one with difficult access. So, so we have paid the insurance, we have paid for the upkeep, we have replaced the clutch on it, we have done all that thing. And I've talked to Steve Ogle, who is, also wants to come back and really participate in it. When I talked about the, the club of guys, you know, Steve would be one of those, and he's welcome to, you know, interested in doing that. And also, you know, the, there's some, several guys that have been driving it now, Pete Kulianis is one that's a driver. And so you, please don't think about the jitney itself as an issue. Cleaning the glass is not an issue, the Historical Society and these guys can take care of that, that, it's just not. And the building was designed for as low maintenance as possible, we have thermal insulated glass, e-glass. We have large overhang to keep the building protected, we have, we're using hardy board for the siding, so there's, you know, their paint, so, okay, every ten, fifteen years, maybe we have to paint. There's very little paint on it, so it's, it's going to be a very low maintenance building. The air conditioning is, is a delta, we're just, we're just trying to keep the building, we don't want it to get to be ninety-five degrees in there, we want to kind of, you know, in the summer, we want to keep it more to, you know, eighty-five or something, so it's a, so it's a, not a big delta in trying to cool or heat the building. We mainly want it for dehumanification, so, so I think the maintenance is going to be really low. And, you know, compared to a parking garage, what is a parking, you know, the per space of a, the cost of a parking garage, I, I don't think our project is going to cost more than one or two parking spaces in a, in an elevated garage. I mean, it's just not a, a big deal, but I think there's a big benefit for all of the merchants. I pay taxes, I'm in, I'm in the CRA, and, and I'm delighted to have that addition and, and have my money go there. So, anyway, that's a personal point.
Sure. I'm willing to support it, I think it brings back some history in town, and hoping this board does too.
My turn. The, you mentioned the civil, is the structural engineering done on it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, all of the engineering except for civil has been completed.
And the mechanical?
Yeah, and the mechanical, that's all, it's all.
No, I've, I've seen manager and I've had conversations, this, I mean, no matter how you turn it, it's five hundred and twenty dollars a square foot, based on the, on the estimate, which is a hard number to, to swallow, and I'm a little concerned with our experience with the clerk's office. That number, which was original estimate, was maybe about fifty or sixty percent higher. At one time, I, well, first of all, let me ask you, you mentioned something about the plaque. Was there some thought of moving the plaque off the side of the jitney onto the pedestal, or?
No, that's a, you know, that's, that's an option.
I didn't understand what, I didn't quite hear what the comment was.
Yeah, there's, what we want to do is recognize the donors.
Okay.
On a plaque, you know, whether that's from the jitney, because it's on the wrong side of the car to be able to be seen from, from this display.
No, actually, I, I wouldn't have a problem with that, because the poor jitney, I think, is carrying, is tired of carrying that huge plaque, so.
We can put the names on there, but that's a whole issue for the Historical Society to deal with.
The, the one thing that, at one time, we had some project, I can't quite, I, I think it was the arch at the sponge docks about a design-build approach. I wouldn't support that, because unless you know what you're looking for or what you want, it, it, you don't do a design-build. In this particular case, we know what it's supposed to look like, the structural's done, the architectural's done. What's not done is the electrical and mechanical, and then the civil.
No, those are done, those are, those are completed.
Pardon me?
Those are completed.
Oh, maybe it wasn't wrapped up in the construction cost.
No, okay, I think part of where it is, is that the construction cost, when I, when I look at it, from what we had proposed, you know, the hundred and five thousand dollars roughly or something, and we end up being at, it's really three hundred and sixty-one dollars a square foot. And that's our kind of, kind of guess, that, that's a high number in itself. It's the, the civil piece, I believe, the engineering piece, the non, you know, the soft cost, I think that's what's, that's what's driving it up when you talk about five hundred or something.
But let me ask you something, in talking today, what I was told, we can't go out to bid on this thing until we spend the forty thousand dollars for engineering costs.
It's the civil piece is the problem.
Well, why do you have to have the civil done in order to get an estimate on what the cost of the construct, why can't you do the civil work separate from the building?
Well, I mean, yeah.
I guess what I'm getting at.
Good, but.
What, what I'm getting at is that I'm, I, I don't want, and for me personally, I don't have an issue, I, I think it's a great idea, the whole thing, but not at any cost.
Sure.
Okay.
I would agree.
And so I'm trying to figure out a way to do this without having to spend forty thousand dollars in order to get a bid package to send it out for a bid for construction. And the one thought I had was a design-build approach, which was, you know what it looks like, the structure's done, send it out to bid. But if what you're telling me is that the forty thousand dollars represents the civil engineering, and it's got nothing to do with a building, then why are we connecting the forty thousand dollars, why do we have to spend that before we go out to bid for the building?
The way we see it is, it becomes a package that you need to know, a contractor would be, and Mark, we're going to, by the way, Kokalakis, when we were talking about a small building, that's one of his smaller buildings, we're going to rope him in to, to, to building this building for us, I think it's, he's two blocks away. So give us a deal. But, no, the thing is that I would think that we would want, and that's up for y'all to decide, but I would want to have one contractor in charge of putting this project together, to building it. And so to do that, he has, needs to have, okay, here's the building at a hundred and, a hundred and five thousand dollars maybe, maybe it's seventy-five thousand, I don't know in this environment. And then, and we're also having to do, you know, another fifty thousand or thirty thousand dollars of, of site work. So, you know, how that, how that comes together, it seems like y'all are going to want one price for everything, and the coordination of having one contractor do it all.
Bob, you need to address, since that engineering part's ours, you need to address that.
Yeah, I, I think the approach here is, part of what's missing here is Ed saying that, that most of the design is finished. But the, the piece that's missing is, is that he's moved ahead on some of the design in advance of the, working with our EOR to get the civil work done. I, I think he's got people that he's working with that we subbed through our engineered record, that's where this forty thousand is coming from. So he's kind of gotten ahead of, of the contract, if you will, which is great, it, it moves things along. But it also means that you're having to approve payment for work that's already been finished. If you don't, that's, that's unfortunate. If you don't, that's, that's unfortunate, um, and, and I can work out how that has to happen. It may just be unfortunate that, that has to fall aside. But, uh, you know, what we need is, we need to move forward with the design if we're gonna move this project forward. And if you approve that, we're gonna spend forty thousand dollars with our engineer as gonna finish the design and then we'll put it out to bid and then you'll see a number for the construction. If that number is too high and we don't like it, then we don't spend it. But you will still have the design, you will have paid for the design, you'll have a design package that you could put on a shelf and wait for the environment to change if you wanted to. I hope that helps clarify it a little bit.
The, my, my issue is if it's, 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 it's too high, uh, when it comes back, we would've spent the forty thousand dollars.
Agreed, so that's the decision of this board, right?
And, and, um, you know, I, I'm trying to figure out a way, how do we do this without having to commit to spending forty thousand dollars before we have something comes back? I mean, you know, I, I think it's a wonderful idea, it's not an issue, but not at any cost. I mean, I don't wanna be accused of being irresponsible because we're building a glass house for a jitney that's very important to the history of Tarpon Springs, uh, uh, with, with, considering what the cost would be. In other words, once we bite into the forty thousand dollars, it's gonna be hard to say no to something once we're in forty thousand dollars. And I don't wanna get in that situation, or if it comes back as two hundred thousand dollars for the house, um, and we spent forty thousand dollars, then it's two hundred and forty thousand dollars. That's the dilemma that I'm having right now.
Yeah.
And I, I, I understand, I'm a little sensitive to what Commissioner Eisner is saying, but nevertheless, it's a, it's a, a journey that we've already started a long time ago. And I think if it wasn't for the economy doing what it's doing right now, the storm down south, we probably wouldn't have a problem. But we learned with a valuable lesson with the clerk's office, that, you know, and, and quite frankly, to me, that is critical. It's absolutely necessary. So that was an easy one to argue, although we did get some flack off that. But this is a different matter. I mean, it's not anything that we have to have tomorrow or the next day or anything like that. We've been living with this for how long now, ten years? Since the jitney's been restored?
Not that long, but it's, no, I think it's, that's a good question. Everything seemed like it was yesterday to me, but, yeah, I would say.
I remember it was some time ago anyway, so I, I just wanna be responsible, that's all. And, and, uh, would a, a design-build approach be feasible to wrap that into the, the forty thousand, although it's, it's a little bit different when you're talking about having to do civil engineering to build a, a building and you're wanting one contractor that's gonna do the building construction and the civil work? That, to me, is a little more challenging to find somebody that's gonna do that 'cause he's gonna have to subcontract the work anyway for this.
Oh, sure, sure.
Yeah.
That would give you a number though, that would give you a truer number though, right?
Pardon me?
That would give you a truer number.
That's what I'm saying, we would know.
Makes sense, what you're talking about.
Right, so that's, that's, I, I would support that, but not to spend forty thousand dollars before we find out, before then we put it out to bid and then we come back with some big sticker shock on it. 'Cause then it's, we don't do it, we still, I know what you're saying, Bob, Mr. Robertson. We're, we've got the design, but I, I don't know what that means, um, other than we've got the design, so, um, and I'm, I'm, you know, if it's not ready to spin at that time and we've got other priorities that pop up, then it's probably something, I should stop and extend the time for, um, about twenty minutes. Let's have a motion to extend the time. Motion to extend it to eleven fifteen? Eleven fifteen, sorry.
Second.
Second, roll call please.
Uh, Commissioner Kulianis?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticus.
Yes, um, let me again cut to the chase on this one. Um, is there any reason why we couldn't do a design-build on it in order to, to kind of get past this thing?
Well, usually the design-build is because you're trying to, it's one-stop shopping, but we've already done all of the design except for the civil. And, uh, the civil number, quite honestly, I think is, is, is relatively high. I wasn't anticipating forty thousand dollars. Well, actually, it probably, the, the amount of, of structural, um, structural work, mechanical and electrical, all of that together is only fifty-four hundred dollars that you would be committing to now. Then there's, you know, sixteen hundred dollars during the construction process overseeing. But that doesn't, that doesn't start until we actually start the building. So, the design build is generally for when you, when you say, well, we have a concept for a building and this is, go ahead and you hire the architect, you hire the engineers, you hire everybody. Uh, you know, in that kind of situation, it, it makes, makes sense, although it's real hard to get apples to apples, you know, be competitive in a design-build situation.
A civil build? And what about a civil build, not a design build?
Well, I, that, I'm not, that's my whole point. I mean, um, I still think that you've got the, um, I, I, on the other hand, I would rather separate the two, the civil work and the, and the, and the building construction separately. At least that way you could put the building out to bid. If, if what you're saying is it's complete design already, you put that building out to bid, let's see what it comes back at. And then if it's something that we could, you know, find a contractor to do the, uh, as an ad alternate to some of the other projects that we're doing for them to address that as well. I mean, I, I don't know what, it, how long these bids are good for from these contractors and things and.
About fifteen minutes right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
If we can withhold the price, it's, it's very difficult.
I mean, I, I just, um, I just would feel a little more comfortable. Um, I, I, I know y'all had a conversation that you rolled the, the electrical and the, uh, uh, HVAC or the climate control in, um, with the numbers, but they weren't on the HUD estimate. And, um, um, you know, I, I'm just having a little dilemma right now trying to, uh, uh, move forward with this.
Bob, what is your, uh, Bob, you need to get the, uh, which is the way to go, we're hearing what they say.
Ed, how much do you, how, I'm gonna ask Ed a question here if you don't mind.
Yeah, sure.
To get us to a point where we can get to, um, a, the next milestone cost estimate. When we, we would need to finish the MEP design, right?
That's finished.
Okay, so that part plus, um, well, really.
The building envelope is completely designed. It's just a question, and originally I was thinking we'd be able to do that within-house city, city folks have, have just simply been able to, with, doing a little bit of street work where we get the water to run around the building. That, that all sounds real simple, but, you know, but.
So we're at a, a point now where, a milestone where we're about as comfortable we're, we're gonna get on the cost estimate?
Yeah, I mean, we can put the building up to bid, but I think it's gonna, I think you need to be able to tell the contractor, okay, all the site work will be in a separate agreement.
Yeah, and I am.
Done by somebody else.
I am a bit hesitant to do it in two pieces. Um, I guess I'll call you chairman, you're Mr. Chair of the CRA Board.
That's the way, I would like to, to take, take them separate. Um, if the bid comes back for the building at whatever, then that can be discussed in the civil work, I think, as far as we may be able to do a, a change order on some existing contract or something.
I understand where you're coming from. I'm a bit hesitant to go that way because if we put the building out, um, no contractor's gonna see that all by itself. They're gonna wanna know the site conditions. And if they don't know the site conditions, they're gonna throw a, a big number in there to mitigate that risk. So I, I worry that we're still gonna have the same issue. That, that would be my concern. I still would rather move forward with finishing the design to a hundred percent. And then we could come back to you and let you know what the.
Let me ask you this, the same as we did earlier, is there any urgency to decide this matter tonight? Or can we give it some additional thought? Unless the commission wants to, to, to have a motion and proceed as it's being proposed, I just, you know what my concern is, so, yeah.
No urgency.
Mr. Hoffman, is there a way to kind of refine this a bit more to, I, I'm not sure how that would be. I mean, everything is complete, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So we can, I mean, we can have a contractor look at it and, you know, or two or three, whatever, or even just to give us some, some cost estimate, more serious cost estimate. 'Cause this is, this is our work in-house. It's not, you know, we weren't asking contractors for numbers, except for the subs. We did get that glazing price from Countryside Glass and that's actually clear, thirty-six thousand dollars. Went to answer your point about all the glass in the building, thirty-six thousand dollars is what this thermal insulated impact.
Right, I understand, yeah. So basically you would, you would hand it to a contractor and let them give us a realistic number on it?
Yeah, but, but again, I just, it's almost like they typically don't wanna give you a number until, unless they know it's a real job, but.
Right, but that's.
They can get it closer, they can probably get it closer than I can.
Yeah. I, I would prefer to take that approach right now, just to have a little more fidelity in the numbers rather than basing it on the, you know, the, uh, I don't, this is the way we normally do things in a normal environment, but this project environment isn't normal right now, so.
True, well, the only thing I would suggest though is that, as, as Mr. Robertson said, that the civil work to be a piece of the puzzle is, is just such a critical piece. And, um, and to give you all good, accurate information, like, okay, the building comes in right where I said, or actually a little low, it's gonna come in at, you know, eighty-five thousand dollars. What do we do with that information? We need to have civil engineering done so that they can give that, maybe that's gonna be fifty thousand, maybe it's gonna be ten thousand. I don't know, but, um, but we, to be able to give you the information y'all want to keep moving forward, we need that civil, civil piece. And whether we use it now or whether we use it in two years from now, or whether we even raise, we say, okay, well, let's go raise some money ourselves if the CRA isn't gonna do it, you know, let's, maybe we'll have a benefactor step forward and say, you know, I'll write a check for two hundred grand, that's worth it, so. Well, you know, I don't know, but we need the drawing to be, 'cause we're kind of, we need to move, we have that, we have to get the water around that building before we can, you know, we gotta figure that out before we move forward. So my, our request is that we go ahead and, and make that happen, so we've got that piece of the puzzle done and then we can go get some real numbers and find out that, that, that I'm way overinflated, that it's not two hundred thousand dollars. Maybe it's gonna be, and again, we keep throwing in that civil number, which.
What do you wanna do?
Which actually kind of confuses things.
I, I just, you know, fool me once, shame on you, fool me twice, shame on me. And I don't wanna have a repeat of the clerk's office. I'd love what we did with the clerk's office, I'd do it again today. But we've, I've learned a lesson from that. Given this environment, we need to be smart in how we proceed.
Sure.
And if, if this, uh, the, the, the enclosure for the jitney is extremely important historically, it's not critical. It's not essential, it is important. It's not even urgent at this point. The clerk's office is urgent, we had problems with leakage, all kinds of issues with that. So we needed to move on and provide an alternative, uh, for that. But in this particular case, I don't see that. And I, I do think that it would be a wonderful addition, but again, not at, at any cost.
Bob, do you think, I mean, I think the whole case is they want, if there's a way to find out the engineering in the building together, um, maybe go back to the drawing board and look how we can get, I can see that's important if someone tell, hey, a company's gonna build and they're gonna do this civil engineering and here's the price. So we know it defended the price. Now, what is that on a design build? What variation could we work with Janina and stuff to do something like that? I think we're seeing maybe it's important to get this through, that we're gonna have to figure out if there's a way to go back to that drawing board and find out, is there a process in the bidding to use to get that price of the building with the engineering incorporated in it, so we have that price?
Wouldn't, maybe, wouldn't that, um, what, you weren't in a meeting today with Paul Smith and Janina?
Correct, I was not.
You, you know the program that they're talking about adopting, right?
Job order contracting, yes.
Why wouldn't this be something good for that sort of thing?
It could be.
Where, where you basically hand it to them and tell them, this is what we want, what is it gonna come out, what's it gonna cost us?
Yeah, but that's materials-based, it's not, I, I don't believe, looking at that contract thing, fork or whatever it's called.
It was contracting.
Job order contracting.
But it's, it's. But it may not be, you, don't get me wrong, I don't know enough about it at this point. They're gonna present it next week, I guess, right?
But again, that's something we could be looking at to make the board more comfortable. I mean, a combination of that and looking at how we can do a variation design build to bring that price back.
Okay, I, I understand the hesitation to not spend so much money in front, I do.
Bob, I know you've done, you know, it's not an issue with the work you've done. Mr. Hoffman, it's not an issue with what, the, the building is a wonderful building, it's gonna make a wonderful addition. I just wanna be responsible on how we move forward with it, that's all, so.
Okay.
And more information right now would be certainly helpful in that regard, I mean, for me personally.
Well, at a minimum, I think we can go back and, Ed, you and I can work together and, and refine that cost estimate a little bit more and make sure that we feel comfortable and a little bit more confident in the hundred and three, hundred and four thousand dollar construction cost estimate. If that, if that comes to be, then, um, maybe we'll come back to the CRA and, and tell you that, uh, we've done some preliminary, uh, civil investigation. I could probably have the EOR under one of my miscellaneous services contracts do a, do a, you know, baseline assessment, maybe with some LiDAR or something to take a look.
So what do you wanna do for tonight? Defer this until some point in the future?
What I'm hearing, yes.
Date to be determined.
Table it then?
Yes.
Okay. And Mr. Eisner, or Commissioner Eisner, excuse me, the hour is getting late. Commissioner Eisner, I would give you time to, to wear some leather off your soles to talk to some of the CRA people too, to.
That's exactly what I'd like to do.
Yeah, okay.
Because, listen, it's not up to me, I'm, I'm spending somebody else's money. And that's, I'd like to see what.
No, that's fine.
That's it.
That'll, that'll, I'll take care of that.
She spoke already.
I'm not sure what.
She wants to speak again.
Uh, just take a minute, Ms. Pro, no, no, go ahead and say what you have to say, but we're gonna have to extend the meeting again.
First of all, when we got the jitney, Mr. Eisner, it wasn't rotted.
Address the mayor, not me, address the mayor.
But you said it, the tires were old. The gentleman didn't let it rot, he was elderly and he was hoping his family would take and do something with it and they didn't. And when a certain gentleman found out about it and we went to talk to him, he was thrilled that we could do something in the city. All of our families were part of the jitneys. Your grandmother, city manager's grandmother, your family, we were all part of the jitney.
Ms. Protesis.
So I want y'all to know, it wasn't rotted. I don't know who you talked to, you said you know everything, mister, but you don't.
The merit of the project.
No, it's wrong because the public hears that, mayor, and I want the truth brought out. We didn't take something that was so rotten that we couldn't, they told us it was worth taking care of.
I, I don't think that, I don't think the merit of the project is a question, it's how we approach it, that's all. And we need to approach it responsibly. That, I mean, if it was my money, it'd be, it would be different, it's not my money, so.
Mayor, I wanna make a motion to table this to a date, um, date in the future.
That's your motion?
That's my motion.
Okay, table it, just, just motion to table this item.
For additional information, to come back for bid suggestions.
Second.
Second.
Roll call please.
Commissioner Kulianis?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Chair Vaticus.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Thank you, Mr. Robertson. Thank you, Mr. McCorris. Um, one last item, um, let's get started on it.
Extend that meeting? Motion to.
Do we extend the meeting to eleven twenty? Second. Okay, roll call please.
Commissioner Kulianis?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Chair Vaticus.
Authorization to proceed with semaphore railroad signal restoration, um, Mr. Robertson.
Thank you, um, so keeping this real brief, we'd like to, um, disassemble the, the signal mast arm, that's the historical signal arm there that's at Train Depot, take it down, sandblast it, powder coat it, uh, and reassemble it in its same location. Um, various rusted bolts and pins that were, that are in the, the, the mast would be replaced with stainless steel parts to help it last longer. Um, and the project would also include attaching replica semaphore signal arms. Uh, in the backup, I provided photos and images of what, uh, that would look like, and that is the item, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, um.
Oh, I'm so sorry, uh, the, the estimated price is twenty-five thousand dollars, that's an important piece to mention. Mark's looking at me like, why'd you forget that?
Uh, public comments, please, are there any public comments on this item? Mr. Jump, are there any public comments?
And we do not have anyone in attendance at this time.
Okay, uh, Commissioners, Vice Mayor Lunt?
You know, it's, this has been discussed again for, for quite some time, you know, do we take it down? Do we powder coat it? Do we add semaphores? Do we add lights? Um, it's, it's an addition to. It's, it's in addition to the city's historic train station. I'm going, fine, I'm going, fine.
Yeah. Commissioner Carr?
Yeah, it's a historic piece that needs to be maintained. I support this.
Right. Commissioner Eisner?
It was redone in '06, 16 years, $25,000. It's costing us $1,500 a year to maintain. I think that's another waste of money.
Okay. Is that it?
Yep.
Okay, Commissioner Kulyas?
I'll support it. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve funding for the.
Semaphore.
Where am I? For the, for the.
Railroad crossing.
Semaphore Railroad Signal Restoration Project.
Is that what you're looking for? Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
No.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Vaticus?
Yes. Okay, that concludes the CRA. We didn't do public comments at the regular session, so let's do public comments now. Chief Young, do you have anything?
I just want to remind everybody, this Friday, November 11th, at 11:00 AM, we'll be having our city's Veterans Day ceremony down at Craig Park at the Warmer War.
Who's hosting that? Is that, would that be the Elks Club, or is that something we're doing in the city?
It's a city-sponsored event, but the Elks Lodge has a barbecue following it.
They do have that then?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Let's see, Ms. Jackson?
I have no comment.
Hi, this is your last meeting with us. I want to thank you for being and putting up with us for three or four meetings anyway, and, and hope to see you in the future. Thank you very much.
Thanks for having me.
Are you kidding after all this time? She's never going to want to see you.
All right, see you, Mayor LeCorse.
I just want to relate to, it was, it was in this whole process, we lost us the attorney, for her to give me the assurances that at least we get the first three BOC, that was a big burden off my chest to be able to start working on the temporarys. So I want to thank her again for the little help she'll give us along the way. I want to thank you a lot for all those years we worked together and you doing that for me. It made my life a lot easier, so, thank you very much. That, that's all I got.
Glad to be able to do it.
Ms. Menusus?
Just one thing, I wanted me to announce that we are still seeking applications from our residents for some of our boards, especially our Board of Adjustment. We need some applications, so. If anybody wants to serve on the board, fill out an app.
Yes, we will be bringing it back next week, and we only have one, and I think there's three slots, and it.
This is the Board of Adjustments.
It'd be nice for the Board of Adjustments, we would bring at least one more, so all of you and your calls and your friends and your list, at least one, two would be great, but another one to, so we could put two on next week would greatly help, so.
We need two people for the Board of Adjustments.
Let's go, Vice Mayor Lunt, do you have any comments?
Actually, I have no comments except to thank you again for being here, and I'll see you soon.
Thank you.
Commissioner Carr, leave me another light.
No comments.
Commissioner Eisner, I want to thank the attorney filling in. It's been a pleasure. And I also want to thank the chief, because we've had some conversations back and forth with a number of situations that have gone on. And the police force has been amazing, chief's been amazing, he's kept us very much informed, and just want to thank him publicly. And I want to thank Mark as well. We've actually gotten through, easy, Taiga. We've actually got through a lot of things, you know, that, that I was impressed with. We've been able to move this city along quite well, so thank you.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Mayor, I'd like to read this letter that we received on October 25th into the record. And we'd have to.
You want to do it in three minutes? You want to extend it for five minutes?
I would say 10 minutes.
Okay, go ahead and make a motion.
Motion to extend to 11:30.
Okay, it won't take that long, but do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Let me find my sheet.
That's all right, take your time.
That's okay, we're good. Commissioner Kulyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticus?
Yes.
Okay, so this letter was received, and this was from At Cause Law Office, it was dated October 25th, 2022, is addressed, Dear Commissioner Kulyas, Commissioner Eisner, and the Board of Commissioners, please be advised that this law office represents Terrapini Banther and Associates LLC, a Florida limited liability company. Regarding the above stated matter, it has come to our attention that you have been engaging in a campaign of false negative press against our client's partners, Mr. Townsend Terrapini and Mr. David Banther and their family names, in an attempt to harm our client's reputation in the eyes of the residents of Tarpon Springs, Florida, the area in which our clients conducts the majority of its business. These statements concern Mr. Terrapini's and Mr. Banther's alleged actions in connection with developer, the Morgan Group, and a certain development project in the city of Tarpon Springs. Many of the statements which are the subject of this letter occurred during the Board of Commissioners' comments on the above referenced subject at the meeting held on October 11th, 2022. Specifically on the subject of our client's partners, Commissioner Kulyas alleged that they conducted backdoor deals to try to get projects done in connection with Morgan Group's development project. Commissioner Kulyas continued by insinuating that our client's partners engaged in criminal conduct. However, within the same allegations, he states that we couldn't prove it, while purporting to present these statements as facts. Mr. Kulyas also admits that the Board of Commissioners does not know what was actually said in any communication he calls attention to. You should be aware that the Florida recognizes the tort of defamation per se in situations where the, the publishing part, party falsely accuses the plaintiff of committing a crime. In addition to spoken statements to third parties, the public, Mr. Kulyas has continued to publish written statements, including multiple comments on Facebook.com accusing our client, Mr. Terrapini, and his entire family of being hypocrites, engaged in alleged wrongdoing, and Mr. Banther of nepotism and wrongdoing in the form of a good old boy network in connection with the Morgan Group's development project. One such statement appears in the Tampa Bay Times where Mr. Kulyas comments on the Board of Commissioners' vote to hire special counsel to investigate the legality of staff discussions with a developer of a major apartment complex. Mr. Kulyas states that if such special counsel's investigation determines that there's nothing there, then Mr. Kulyas wants a second one. This demonstrates the ongoing nature of statements causing irreparable reputational harm to our client, and suggests that the Board of Commissioners will spend taxpayer dollars to fund unnecessary investigations for the sole purpose of damaging our client. It appears that your verbal and written statements as described above were made with knowledge that such statements were false or with reckless regard of whether they were false or not. This is particularly evident from Mr. Kulyas's statement that alleged wrongdoing through phone calls between the developer and one or more of our client's partners whilst simultaneously stating that we do not know what was discussed. While our client recognized that the city of Tarpon Springs has the right to engage in lawful government activity, such activity does not include so-called smear campaigns against local business owners. Additionally, the nature of your statements, especially those on social media, may extend beyond the scope of your position as a commissioner, thus subjecting you to personal liability. Therefore, is hereby demanded that you cease and desist from making further discriminatory verbal and written statements about our client, its business partners, and their families in such a manner, including but not limited to public forums, social media websites, and the press. Fail or to do so will result in the law firm informing our client of its rights against you, including the filing of a lawsuit seeking damages and injunctive relief. Accordingly, this letter is sent as a condition precedent to filing a lawsuit. Please further accept this letter as a written demand for your insurance information in connection with our client's potential defamation claim. And as you are now notice of potential litigation, you are required to take all necessary steps to preserve and not destroy, conceal, or alter any and all communications and documents relevant to this matter, including by way of example without limitation, emails, texts, and self-destructing messages, social media posts, voicemails, records, files, and other data, whenever located and regardless of the format or media. Purposefully destruction of such evidence could result in penalties, including legal sanctions. Our office may be contacted via email, mail, or by telephone at the information provided above if you wish to discuss. Sincerely, Ashley May Hornin at CNE. And so, what I will say is Tarpon Springs, I work for you, I work for the residents, and I'm not going to be silenced from the truth. I'm not going to be silenced for looking out for the city's best interest. And so I'm not going to be silenced into reading factual, correct documents that are public information. And which I will read this one. This is dated October 27th, 2017. It is addressed to Mr. Camille Salami Development, the Morgan Group Incorporated. Dear Mrs. Salami, it was very nice to meet with you yesterday. I appreciate you taking the time to meet with myself and city staff to share your concept for the site and how important this project is to us for the future growth of Tarpon Springs. I look forward to hearing from you, and I hope to be working with you and the Morgan Group. Best regards, David Banther, Vice Mayor. I also have five other documents that I want to bring into the record, just for, just for the sake of disclosure and transparency. This form right here is Form AP, it's a memorandum of the voting conflict for county, municipal, and other local public officers. It is dated December 8th, 2020, with the city of Tarpon Springs, involving the Anclaw Harbors Project. And it states, I, Townsend Terrapini, hereby disclose that on December 8th, 2020, a measure came or will come before my agency, which, and this box is checked, inord to my special private gain or loss. The other box is checked, where it says, inord to the special gain or loss of my relative slash stepmother and father. And it reads at the bottom with the notes, members of my family are working for this applicant, which inord a special gain or loss to myself and them. This is signed December 16th, 2020. We also have another conflict of interest document, which was dated for the meeting of January 7th, 2021, with the city of Tarpon Springs, in which it's the disclosure of the local officer's interests. I, Townsend Terrapini, hereby disclose that on January 7th, 2021, a measure came or will come before my agency, which, check one or more, and the checkbox is, inord to my special private gain or loss. The other checkbox is to the inord to the special gain or loss of my relatives, stepmother and father. And in the notes at the bottom, be possible special gain or loss to myself plus stepmother and father. And this is signed January 7th, 2021. We have another voting conflict of county, municipal, and other local public officers. It is for the, the meeting of October 26th, 2021. And it says, I, Townsend Terrapini, hereby disclose that on October 26th, 2021, a measure came or will come before my agency, which, check one or more, but this time, there's only one area checked on this box. And it says, inord to the special gain or loss of my relative, a special gain or loss of my relative. So there's a difference between the previous two and this current one. I also want to read the voting conflict for county, municipal, and local public officers that was filled out by Townsend Terrapini for the meeting of November 9th, 2021, in which I, Townsend Terrapini, hereby disclose that on November 9th, 2021, a measure came or will come before my agency, which, inord, and this box is checked, inord the special gain or loss of my relative. Inord to the special gain or loss of myself plus family. So the wording keeps to be changed from letter to letter, and here's the final voting conflict of interest, which is dated for the meeting of December 14th, 2021. I, Townsend Terrapini, hereby disclose that on December 14th, 2021, a measure came or will come before my agency, which, and this box is checked, inord to the special gain or loss of my relative. And inside the notes is concerned citizens of Tarpon Springs versus city of Tarpon Springs, case number 21-00030-AP. So these documents seem to have been different as the months went by and the conflict of interest papers were filled out from personal gain to relative gain. And so these are factually correct and accurate documents. We will not be silenced from telling the truth for the citizens of Tarpon Springs and being there to fight for the citizens of Tarpon Springs no matter what. Thank you, Board.
All right, my turn. I just want to, I'm looking forward for Veterans Day, chief. I think that's going to be a very nice affair, and I'm hoping the commission can be there as well. It's been a very busy time. I know we've got a lot of extracurricular activities that we need to finish up on, and that's taken us away from a lot of things. And, and just a very quick update. I know some of you are going to ask me about the, basically the progress as far as the search committee, search consultants and stuff, and this whole issue that we've been, we're dealing with right now has kind of gotten in the way. So I'll get back to that once the table gets cleared, and I've talked to the city manager about it as well, and I'll have some more information for you. But it won't be till later, at least, so just be patient with that, so, okay. I haven't forgotten and I ignored it, but there's some other things that we need to finish up on. Meeting adjourned at 11:29.